Okay, aloha, awi na laka ko. Let the record reflect that today is Thursday, February 20th, 2025, and the time now is 1:02 PM. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees. Board Secretary, please take a roll call.
Trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka.
Yo.
Trustee Akina.
Aloha Mike Kako.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galuteria.
Yo.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza.
Yo.
Trustee Wahehe.
Present.
Chirka Halei.
Present.
You have eight trustees present, you have quorum.
All right, thanks Lehuah. All right, aloha kako, this meeting can be viewed via livestream on OHA's website at www.oha.org/livestream. For those joining us on Zoom to testify or to listen, please note that we are using the webinar platform rather than the standard Zoom meeting format. As an attendee, you will be able to watch and listen to the proceedings. If you wish to testify on a specific agenda item, please follow these steps. First and foremost, raise your hand to indicate that you would like to speak. Number two, we will change your status from attendee to panelist when it is your turn. This may take a few seconds, so please be patient. As a panelist, you will have the option to turn on your camera and unmute yourself to provide your testimony. And once you have finished testifying, please mute yourself and you will be returned to attendee status. Here, joining us at the Board of Trustees meeting is our Board Counsel, Richard Naevi-Wardeman, and so we welcome Naevi. I will now turn it over to the status of OHA activities. Lehuah, do we have anyone sign up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, great, so at this time, we'll turn it over to our Kapo Hana, our CEO, for our administrative update and to introduce the administrative team. Trustees, just like I had mentioned at previous meetings and also in the email yesterday, if you would like a specific item to be reported on to the Board of Trustees, please feel free to send those topics of discussion, the administration encourages them. But what we do ask is that you send them the Tuesday prior to the board meeting. By 12 o'clock would be wonderful, that way we can forward it to the administration and give them basically a good week to be able to prepare for, or more for those items. Sometimes things pop up, and so I sent out an email yesterday and once the Kapo Hana introduces her team, the order for the administrative report will be as follows. It'll be beneficiary events, followed by the CEO's travel report. Recently, at the last meeting, the CEO reported that she went on a recent trip on OHA's behalf to Seattle, so she reported on that. Followed by the OHA's most current organizational chart as of February 10th, and that was sent to you as well. And then finally, the fourth item will be the OHA open purchase requests. We have questions from trustees on current PRs that may or have the potential to expire in the end of June, so we'd like to get an update from that as well. I'd also just like to remind our trustees that because we are starting our meeting today at 1:00 in the afternoon, some of us who do live on the neighbor islands have flights back to our homes in our ohana, and so it is my intention to wrap up our board meeting today by 4:30-ish, which gives us about three and a half hours to do our business and our work. And so the questions we ask, the discussions that we have, you know, let's just keep that in mind. And I don't want to limit anyone on doing that, but we just want to make sure that I think we can get through our agenda hopefully in the next three and a half to four hours. So with that being said, Kapo Hana, you are recognized.
Mahalo Chair, aloha Vice Chair, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to share the good work that the administration has been doing. Before we jump into that, I'd like to introduce who will be joining me at the table, but also in the gallery. In person and online, we have Chief Operating Officer Keha Puu, Endowment Director Ryan Lee, Interim Corporation Counsel Everett Ota, Interim Senior Legal Counsel Nichi Ozawa, Senior Director of Strategy and Implementation Elena Farden, Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs Hailema Farden, Director of Education and Culture-Based Learning Anuhea Awo Chan, Director of Economic and Business Resilience Pony Askew, Director of Human Resources Corey Nakamoto, Interim Information Technology Manager Kevin Chalk, and IT Systems Engineer and Administrator Kelsey Wade. Mahalo. Thank you for the list of items that you've provided us time to go over. Chair, if I may, add to the beneficiary events. I've also provided in my updates our performance management system and implementation timeline. I think it's really important that the trustees are apprised of that. I did give a preliminary report on January 23rd, but this is a much more detailed report. And then I also want to add that I'd like to also present to the board our Manai Mauliola Strategic Plan Targets and Reporting System. I think that's really important that they are prized of the work that's going on, as that was one of the major priority directives when I started as CEO. In order to get our strategic plan underway, it was really important that we established metrics.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to start off with our performance management system and implementation timeline. I'm going to have our COO and-
You know what, let's do beneficiary events, followed by a travel report, and then we'll do those two items, and then we'll do the org chart and the open purchase requests.
Akina, okay. So for upcoming beneficiary advocacy events, we are going to be, OHA will be hosting a Kukakaiulu na ivi kupuna o naue follow-up meeting. This is going to be on Monday, February 24th, 2025. The time is going to be from 5:00 to 7:30. Our team will be staying over. The last one that we did, it was a standing room only. It was very well attended, and we will be doing this one Zoom. So the first one, although it was, it was livestreamed, there was no interaction, but because ivi kupuna is a very important issue, not only to this board, as one of your top three priorities, but you know, considering all of the contentiousness that's happening out in Waimea, we wanted to make sure that our staff could stay after the meeting to talk with beneficiaries. And of course, trustees are invited to attend. The location will be at Waipaa Foundation, and food will be provided. On the agenda you see there, we are going to be focusing on what is occurring over at Onei Onei Road. We will be providing updates, so state and county offices will not be there, but they are providing us their statements. So we will be providing the community with their progress. And then we're also going to be taking some time to talk about OHA's work in terms of ivi kupuna legislation and advocacy efforts. And then we'll take Q and A, and we will be providing summary reports to the state and county offices that are not able to attend. We're hoping to have Chirka Halei do opening remarks. If not, then I'm sure you folks will decide who will represent the board to give opening comments. I want to make a correction to what I have here for a support rally for DHHL $600 million request at the state Capitol. Actually, this was a bill that was put in by a beneficiary. I had it as February 25th, it's actually March 25th, so there is time, and our communications team is going to be working on comments for our BA Chair, who will be providing comments during the press conference. So there will be a rally and sign waving from 10:00 to 11:00. We're hoping that those Oahu staff members who can get away for a little bit will be able to join in the sign waving. And then from 11:00 to 11:30, there's going to be speeches and a press conference. And then lastly, we have a meet and greet with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And initially, it was for the freshman legislators on the House, but it has now been broadened. And so the invitation has gone out to all of the legislators. It is recess, so we're not sure exactly how many will be at the square building at the time. But as of now, we have 13 RSVPs from the Capitol, and then we have a handful of our trustees who have RSVPed. But again, we welcome those to attend. And I do want to just assure our trustees that this has been cleared through the Ethics Commission. And so we will do a little bit of business. We will be sharing about OHA and our policy agenda, and then it'll be a more informal meet and greet.
So are you planning to have like a PowerPoint or a presentation developed?
Yeah, so I have one already that I provided to the House Majority Caucus that we can use again. And it basically goes, it provides an overview of our statutory mandates as well as our legislative package. And then we'll have some light lunch, it'll be Hawaiian food, so.
And then the rest of the time will just be opportunities for trustees to talk story and engage with the legislators.
Absolutely, yeah.
Maybe a follow-up to that would be to invite them here, to be able to see where Na'lamakukui is and where the actual office is.
Sure. Any questions?
Any questions, trustees, on our beneficiary upcoming events? Okay.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so the next thing on the agenda, I promised to come back and give a fuller report on my trip to Tacoma. I'm going to ask Pony Askew, our Director of Economic Resilience, to also join me at the table. She accompanied me on this trip. And so again, I'm not going to go verbatim, you folks have the report in front of you. But please know that any time that there is an initiative, an event, a project, my directive to the administration is that we always have to be able to demonstrate alignment to Manai Mauliola. Yes, it's good that we collaborate and we partner with other state agencies on state goals. But more importantly, we want to make sure that we are accomplishing our Manai Mauliola goals as it pertains to bettering the conditions of native Hawaiians. So I do have that spelled out at the bottom of page one. What specific memo outcomes we felt were in alignment with our trip to Tacoma. And so we were able to visit two different sites, the Tacoma Central Kitchen and the Saquamish Seafood Site Visit. On pages two and three, I have the list of participants on the trip. It was a really big contingent of state leaders from the executive branch. And you know, we felt very grateful that they extended the invitation to us. Again, bettering conditions of native Hawaiians is going to require us to do multiple partnerships and collaborations. So some of the key takeaways I have here on page three is really looking at food security. And when we went to the Bethel Central Kitchen, we were able to see how they're sourcing local ingredients for the school meals. And why this is important for us here at OHA is we have over 500 acres of agricultural lands in Wahe'aua that right now are not in production. And those Whitmore lands is really the breadbasket of central Oahu. And it is in very close proximity to where the Whitmore Food Hub is being built and the value-add processing center that has already been opened in Wahe'aua. And so there's a great opportunity for us to get our mahai onto our hundreds of acres that are just sitting right now. We will be coming in front of the board with our Kukani Local Conceptual Master Plan, which we will be incorporating ag production. So for us to be able to go and look at how the state is assessing various customer groups, right? So the biggest issue for farmers is ensuring that they have a market, right? If you're going to grow something, they want to make sure that they can sell it. And so what the state is focusing now on is what are those consumer or those markets that are guaranteed for farmers? So whether it's the prisons, our hospitals, our schools, we want to make sure that our farmers can be profitable if they are going to be farming. And you know, farming is not a very lucrative industry. So we want to make sure that we can de-risk as much as possible any mahai that we put on our aina. And again, this is just an opportunity for us to start thinking outside of the box to ensure that if we are to put our ag lands into production, that we can assist our mahai as much as possible in making sure that they can make a living doing this work. The second thing is we went and looked at different opportunities. Sorry, so that was the Bethel. On page four was the Saquamish Seafood. Did you want to add anything, Pony, for the Bethel? You got to turn on your mic.
Good, okay, Tess. I just want to note that the state feeds approximately 164,000 meals a day. And the first phase of this regional kitchen plan that's going to be in close proximity to Kukani Loko, the goal is to feed 70,000 meals a day. And so there's really a need to feed our keke and an opportunity for our mahai to be a part of that opportunity to feed our keke. So I just wanted to add that note to it as well.
I think it's also important to note that our native Hawaiian communities, many of our keke who are native Hawaiian are in free and reduced lunch. So their secured meals are going to be coming from the public school system. So if we can contribute to that, you know, even better. I also wanted to mention that one of the opportunities that I saw that I think we would have an opportunity to partner is on workforce development. We know that when folks come out of prison, that they need employment. Folks that are in the adult schools need employment. And these are low barrier to employment kinds of jobs at the kitchen, and those with developmental disabilities. And so again, we know native Hawaiians overrepresented incarceration. We know that many of them, you know, we're still trying to get our high school graduation rates up. So some of our native Hawaiians are going to be in the adult schools getting their GED. And then, you know, again, we have native Hawaiian families who have children that have developmental disabilities. And having this regional kitchen allows for additional employment opportunities as well that we can explore and partner. So the second site visit was to the Saquamish Seafood Facility. And so again, multiple takeaways regarding economic impact, cultural, environmental sustainability, workforce development. And then ultimately, you know, how can OHA and DHHL, in collaboration with our Hawaiian communities, determine how we can create economic drivers, revenue generators in our communities where folks can live, work, play? So they don't have to, you know, necessarily leave their communities to make a living. And the example that we got to see at Saquamish Seafood is really the use of their native gathering rights to be able to harvest, well, actually, they cultivate and they harvest gui duck, clams, salmon, crab, and it's a $50 million revenue generator for the tribe. And again, they have other revenue generators, but this was one definitely that we felt that we could continue to have conversations with the HHL. So they did have their deputy director on the trip. So this is going to be one of the items when we put our DHHL, OHA MOU together. We would like to explore revenue generators, aquaculture would be one of those. And this would be a model that we could potentially look at. So when they cultivate these commodities, it is to feed the tribe, but more so it's for export. What was talked about on this particular trip, and I think would be of interest to the board, is that we could potentially look at OHA, DHHL, 31% ownership with the community, the Hawaiian community owning 49% of the venture. So I mean, these are kinds of creative ways where it's not just we, OHA as an entity, are driving, you know, revenue generators, but also the community themselves are owners in some of these ventures. So I think it's a different way to start looking at building community wealth. Lot of opportunity, do you want to add anything?
I specifically asked them about the wraparound services that they provide to their tribal members within their communities and looking at the services they provide. First and foremost, they're providing food services to kupuna from the revenue that they're generating from here, their programs, as well as olalohawai effort, I'm sorry, for us it would be, but for them, it's their tribal language. And just really understanding what they do with what they're making from their products. And naturally, they're creating their own, you know, social framework within their communities to take care and circle back. But it's really, the first and foremost being how they are distributing the foods that they're growing, in this case seafood, to kupuna was also an impressive takeaway for me as well. I want to also mention that with workforce development, they offered, I think it was 20 internship positions every summer for the students as well. And it gets them to learn how to cultivate on their own land and create economy around those cultivations. So that was another big takeaway for me as well.
And just to add to the workforce development piece, the tribe, as much as possible, provides hiring opportunities for their own tribal members first. And then they also provide jobs for, you know, the community surrounding the-
Yeah, sorry, that was 89% of the employees were from the tribes. It was 89%, so that was a really good statistic.
Right, so opportunities and next steps for OHA, specifically with the University of Hawaii. So, you know, in addition to the site visits and, you know, Pony and I trying to make the connections to Manai Mauliola and the work that we're trying to do here at OHA with what the folks in Washington are doing, which just the networking that we had with the numerous folks that were on the trip with us. But for me in particular, it was being able to connect with the Citar Dean Parswinder. And I also had a follow-up meeting with Debbie Wendy, no, 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 the president of the UH, Wendy Herschel. Henzel, Wendy Henzel, Kalomai. I met with her on February 6th, and I got to debrief with her about the trip, my conversations with the Citar Dean, and I have here listed what our preliminary agreements would be for a draft MOU between OHA and the UH system and Citar. So you can see that listed there. One of the biggest takeaways from the Citar conversation is their willingness to provide land agent support to kokua our landpia. As we think about how do we increase our stewardship and activation on our lands, as well as how do we start employing ahupua'a restoration and food sustainability on our parcels? The other MOU that will result from this trip is, and other conversations that we've been having with DHHL, is a draft MOU with Kali and his team. And I've listed several of the things that we would like to focus on with DHHL. So in conclusion, you know, I felt that it was a very quick turnaround. We flew up there, it was one day of just jam-packed site visits, debriefs, and we came back. And, you know, I think it was worth the while, and, you know, Pony has her work cut out for her in determining how we can best figure out the workforce economic development opportunities that we have and certainly getting those MOUs drafted and put in front of the board for review and approval.
I'm sorry, trustee, any questions, and Chair can ask trustee Lindsay.
I have a question. What is the status of the general plan for Kukani Loko, since you're talking about Wahe'aua?
Thank you. So we just met with the landpia, I want to say a week ago. And so I had asked Lori and the team to, one, refresh the plan, because Manai Mauliola, when the plan was first created, there was a lot of input from community. But what was missing for me when I reviewed it was our alignment to our strategic plan. So I asked her to do a refresh. Last week, when she provided, when she and the team provided their update, they focused on the REPI grant. So as you know, we have gotten a $6 million federal grant to do agroforestry. So she focused on that aspect of the plan. She will be refreshing, like I said, to make sure that there's alignment to our strategic plan. And then it will be coming to the board. Yeah, so do you have the dates? So there will be a presentation, Kalomai, our CEO is saying that there will be a presentation at our next ILM meeting with Chair Souza and the team. So that's next week. It's just a preliminary, yeah. So we will, next week, we're going to have our preliminary meeting with our ILM Chair. Yeah, and then if he feels it's ready to go to the ILM, the full ILM committee, then we'll do that subsequently. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Trustee Akina.
Thank you, Chair. Kapo Hana, I appreciated so many of the insights that you shared. Thank you for taking the trip and for working hard on that. One thing in particular that was encouraging was to hear how our kokua as OHA, with public policy for everyone, benefits Hawaiians. For example, as you mentioned, serving the public schools breakfast and lunch systems helps everyone, but it ultimately helps Hawaiians because our Hawaiians are a significant part of the population benefiting from that. I like that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustees, any other questions? Trustee Galuteri.
Thank you, Chair. This is more of just an observation and perhaps a suggestion. When it comes to workforce development, there is a growing community of institutional knowledge that is rarely tapped. And that is kupuna. Those who have retired already, but now they're kind of pals staying home watching TV. And they want to now embark on their second or their next chapter. So there are agencies throughout the Lahui that are starting to gather momentum with kupuna who have now decided they want to get back either into the workforce development part of it and start to embark on sharing their knowledge. And I think OHA would be a good place to start to put some intergenerational type of programming together. Okay, so just bear that in mind as you folks move and you find maybe a sweet spot.
Mahalo. No, that's a great idea.
Mahalo, thank you, Chair.
Trustees, any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Pony.
Now we'll move on to the-
Org chart.
Performance Management System.
Oh, okay, mahalo.
And implementation timeline.
Thank you, so I'll have Corey and Kea join me at the table. So one of the first things when I came to OHA 13 months ago, it became very apparent to me that there was no consistent way of managing staff performance. And there were two major issues when I met with staff. So I know, Chirka Halei, you're meeting with all of the staff, pia by pia. I did the same exact thing when I came in, and I think it's really important for us to hear directly from our teams to know what some of the pain points were. And two pain points that came out very clearly to me from our staff was, one, compensation, and the other one was hostile work environment, toxic work environment. And both of those things I've been working on very diligently in addressing. But when we talk about compensation and salary, it's critical to understand that it doesn't happen singularly or in a vacuum. It has to happen in coordination with a performance management system. Because the performance management system is what creates the clarity for our staff on what is expected in terms of work product, in terms of the quality of the work we're expecting, how we encourage their professional and personal growth, how are we ensuring that they are culturally competent? We are the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. That's what distinguishes us from any other state agency, any county agency. We are the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. So having that cultural competence embedded into everything we do is super critical. But that only happens, all of the things that I just mentioned, only happen with intention- But that only happens, all of the things that I just mentioned, only happen with intentionality. And it has to happen through a performance management system. So as we looked at, as I started to work on the salary issues, we, the longer, much longer process is actually the performance management system. So in, in the spring of 2024, myself, Corey and others on the ELT, we started meeting with different performance management system vendors. Cause there are a lot of them out there. But we had to make sure that we could identify a system that could provide us with the level of functionality that we needed and that we were hoping could accomplish our goals. What's really critical when it came on and, you know, the directive from trustees was implement the strategic plan. So for us to be able to do that, being able to cascade our, our work for the staff. It starts with the strategic plan and it cascades from the executive leadership team to the leaders of each pia, to the managers, to the staff. So there is, there's a very specific way in which goals are set and how they're executed. This performance management system allows us to categorize and structure all of that work. What's more, what, what's even additionally important, and I know we're going to be talking about salary and compensation later in, in this meeting, is that there has to be an objective way in which we can assess merit performance. Because that's how you're going to assign what the compensation will be annually, right? If somebody's going to get a merit increase, you have to have a system in place to be able to do that. So the, the, the performance management system and salary compensation review have to go hand in hand. We started with the performance management work first because it's just a longer runway. Being able to select a vendor and then be able to do implementation is just much, much longer than the salary review, which is already underway. So at this point, I, I just wanted to share the importance of it, how this cascades from your folks directive to me to make sure that we're implementing the strategic plan, that there's a lot that happens in the background to make sure that we can do this work with fidelity. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Corey and Kehau. So we had a working group that, that was formed for implementation. And it consisted of HR, our Hawaiian affairs team, strategy implementation, and COO, which a bulk of our, our pia fall under. So at this point, if you could share with trustees what you've accomplished to date as well as the, the implementation timeline?
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, trustees. Thank you for having us. So today, we've already selected a platform, which is the Quantum Platform. We've started doing some configuration in that platform so that we will be able to do testing. We are planning to also hold a pilot program, which will run from March through June so that we can not only test the system, but also look at it to see if there's any adjustments that need to be made or any improvements. And then, and then we'll do a rollout in, in July, August of the year. But in regards to Quantum itself, it does allow us the functionality that we're looking for, the ability to cascade goals, the ability to have and document one-on-one conversations, to rate and to customize that rating schedule, you know, to fit our culture, right? It also allows us to not only do those things, but to document that. Document those conversations, document the progress or the lack thereof. Hopefully not, but in, in the event that that does occur. And then allow us to also plan and move forward, set goals, set expectations, and, and ensure that those things are being met as we move forward. Right. Russian development as well. We'll also be able to be tracked in that new system. We have actually, you know, a, a pretty detailed timeline that we've been working on, the working group. I'm not sure if you all might have any questions. I, I know I gave just a real high level.
And Chair, I think it would be maybe good at a, a later date to actually do a run-through to show you folks what the, what the platform looks like. Because you folks are all supervisors as well. So you folks will be setting goals with your, your teams. So you folk, everybody, anybody who is a supervisor in the organization will be going through the training. But we can actually do a run-through just so that you folks can just get acquainted with the system to see what they've been programming and will be implementing.
I'll just add, we are, like Corey said, so we're putting a pilot together. So we're identifying teams. So we are looking to include some BOT members who would want to be part of the pilot. And basically in the pilot, we're going to model what a full performance cycle would look like. And that's the entire, you know, the fiscal year. But we're going to kind of model that within a three-month period. And it's an opportunity for us to make some improvements and tweaks along the way before we get to full rollout, which we're planning for August. So we're still designing training. This is really about having a system of, you know, for support and accountability. And when I mean support, I mean support to staff, accountability, alignment to our organizational goals. So Quantum is the platform, but really we are working on developing this system or this process using, you know, Ike we have gained from employment in other areas. You know, what was existing here at Office of Hawaiian Affairs and as Stacy, you know, said, trying to be culturally grounded and keeping in mind that, you know, we are, we don't want to just be a native serving organization. We want to be a native Hawaiian organization. So it's a, it's plenty work, but we are working steadily on it. And so March 13th is our kickoff, like our first training with the pilot team. We are looking at a group of about 30, but we were going to discuss with Stacy reaching out to include. So ideally, it's a manager and a employee who is participating in the pilot. But yeah, we'll reach out to see if anyone here would be interested in being a part of that.
Good? Okay.
We'll take questions.
Turn it over to questions for trustees. Trustee Lapa, have a question? Oh. Trustees' questions? Yeah, trustee Galatera?
Yeah, Kehau, do we have a forecast of when we're going to fill the vacancies to the maximum potential?
That is coming up in the next update.
Oh, doesn't, okay, fine. Thank you.
And trustees, any questions regarding the performance-based management system, its implementation timeline? I have some questions, but I defer to you guys first. Trustee Souza? Go ahead. Okay. So the Quantum system is a, is the plan for it to be like an online electronic database system? Okay. How often or what are you envisioning the system will be set up for supervisors and staff to receive performance feedback? In terms of, if you look at the course of a calendar year, what is the administration envisioning that, that evaluation on an annual basis will look like?
So the cycle would be a full year. And really like, so I, I say like, I, the platform is, is basically it's a tool, but it's the system, right, and the process that, that's really the heart of performance management. And so within the cycle, there, the year is going to start with goal setting and calibration, you know, with your staff. And as Corey mentioned, like, that's an important piece because this is where we can address organization, org-wide goals. You know, goals that would apply across the org towards all staff. For example, some cultural competence goals that Hailema is working on. And then also there would be division level goals that would be set by division leaders in collaboration with their supervisor and then individual goals, right? And that's about personal growth, whether it's a gap area or an area that you want to promote growth in. So there's the goal and calibration phase of the cycle. And that basically, that, that's interaction, that's, you know, you and I having a face-to-face. You're doing some reflection before you come and meet with me, but it gets captured in the system. So the system will get set up to be able, for us to be able to document our goals. So there's, you know, so there's some work, there's some back and forth, right? There's interaction, which we want to encourage, right, between staff and their managers. Because again, this should be about support as well as accountability. There are monthly check-ins in between again, and there's, within the system found in, there are, there's space, I just go call them space, to capture that kind of feedback. Feedback, you know, performance management shouldn't be at the beginning and the end of the year. I should know how I'm doing and I should be getting that feedback and seeking that along the entire year. So in between the start of the year and mid-year, there will be these monthly check-ins with staff. So, and again, the system enables us to capture that and document that in Quantum. Mid-year, there is a mid-year evaluation period. That will be something that gets formally documented within the system. Again, it's going to be set up for that. We are looking at soft rating, you know, having some reflective questions like, but this is soft rating again. So we're halfway through. This is where I'm formally, you know, understanding how I'm doing or sharing back. It's also an opportunity to tweak your goals if, you know, we got to make some changes or updates. Again, and that's also captured throughout the system. And in between again, should be these check-ins, right? Opportunities for coaching and feedback with staff and, and managers. And then there's the end of year evaluation. So this is the formal end of year appraisal. We do have our loi-loi or our rating system. So that soft, you know, that mid-year and end of year evaluation. We have, and we're trying to make it culture-based. So this is something that Ellen and Hailema have worked on, that rating or that evaluation criteria. But this is where that comes in at the end of the year. This is your formal appraisal, end of year. Shouldn't come as a shock if we're doing a good job as managers throughout the year. And it's that that would also feed into this merit system that, you know, Stacy is mentioning and talking about. Because that will help to determine what that increase would be.
So do you envision the, the evaluation process to be, and using this electronic tool as a, as a database or a tool system? But it, it won't replace the one-on-one sit-down with your supervisor and team member that those, you know, interpersonal conversations and discussion. So the, the, the tool is to capture that information?
Right.
Okay.
It's to help memorialize the, the conversations, the agreements, the understanding, right? So because, you know, most often if we just kuka, kuka, and then somebody leaves and then at the end of the year, you're like, but I thought I told you, you know what I mean? So this allows us to formalize and then create consistency. So when the board sets goals for their team, because I have to imagine that when the board, whatever goals the board sets would be similar for all aides, right? Again, there's probably going to be differentiated, differentiated goals per trustee, but there's probably going to be BOT goals, right? I mean, we're all trying to move Manai Maoliola forward, right? And so, and similarly on, in the, the next presentation, we'll be talking about how Manai Maoliola targets and the objectives and the goals that are outlined in our plan should be reflected in our performance, our performance goals. Cause that's really what keeps us all coherent and all coordinated, moving in the same direction, working on the same things.
So I mean, I think this is a good idea and it's headed in the right direction. My next question would be, this has the potential to be implemented in the first quarter of fiscal year '26, right? So we're assuming July, July, August?
August.
August.
So August is, so we, we have a communication plan to kind of roll out. So we're piloting right from March to June, June. And we want to give our, yeah.
True.
And even in this first year, like, we're all about continuous improvement. So we want to make tweaks. So we're looking at August. So this is going to be a modified timeline. I think we said by end of September. So August would be training. And it's not just like the foundational training of how we frame performance management, but it's going to be training in the system too, which that's the technical, which like I make up that I'm going to need a little bit of extra time. So we want to make sure we allow for time for people to, you know, again, one, understand the basics and the foundation, the framework we've set up, and then give time for training in the system, like Quantum itself. And then we've, we're using deadlines as the, this is, by this date is when you would have those one-on-one interactions, settle, you know, collaborate on what your goals are and it be in the system by that deadline.
I guess my question then is what are we doing now? Because in our staff handbook, which we've talked about this before, is severely outdated. It's an employee staff handbook from 2018. It has the signature of the CEO, two CEOs ago, and that needs to be updated immediately. The impression when new employees come here to OHA and get onboarded shouldn't be the 2018 handbook. So in our handbook, performance evaluations say that evaluations are done every six months. So when you first get hired, you have a six-month introductory period. You have a mid-year performance evaluation and an annual performance evaluation. Are we doing that now? And if not, why aren't we?
Great question. I'm going to let Corey answer that one.
Yeah. So the, the answer is some, some managers are and some aren't. So for example, when I came on board and actually, and, and this is reflective of, of your statement, right, about the handbook being outdated. We actually have now a three-month introductory period. And following that three-month introductory period, then there would be an introductory review. So in my case, that I did get one from my supervisor, which is Everett. But I don't believe that that's being consistently done by all supervisors. I think part of the challenge, and, and I am not trying to point at COVID, but COVID was a challenging time because we weren't in the office. And there were, there were challenges with, I think, even, you know, doing performance evaluations at that time. When Everett was interim director, I know they did have performance evaluations done at that time, which was, you know, prior to me coming on board last March. It was.
Yes. Sorry to interrupt you, Corey, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean we can't have something now. And we should have something now between now and August. We have new employees that we've hired over the last six months. We have existing staff that want and desire feedback from their supervisors. So we shouldn't wait until August. We should put at least something, put out some guidance that has some temps, and something temporary in place so that we can, we can give feedback. That trustees can give feedback to their trustee agents, secretaries, that all of you can give feedback to your staff. Feedback is vital. It's critical. We can't wait seven months to implement a program that we're going to roll out and will need to get a chance to get used to.
Right.
So I would encourage the administration to, to, to do that, right?
We can, and we can set that.
But no, so currently there is a performance evaluation form, which is the one that has been used. It was similar to what, you know, Everett had used for me, for example, and what I'm planning to use for my introductory individual in my team, Joel. It's a, it's not, there's no rating, but there is that opportunity to provide feedback in a formal fashion. And again, to your point too, right? It doesn't mean that, that people shouldn't be having daily conversations or weekly check-ins with their staff. It's just that right now, aside from that one form, you know, we don't currently have any other way to document that except for managers, you know, keeping some kind of notes on their own.
So I, I think you, you should consider doing that, right? I mean, that has to be led by leadership and it can be led on our side, on the board's sweet side. It can be led on your side, but putting something in place, at least interim
Yeah.
for the next six or seven months before this goes online, I think is really important. And I think our, our, our staff would really appreciate that, right? Feedback is a two-way street. So
Right.
it's obviously should be nonpunitive and it's an opportunity
Absolutely.
to be able to improve the organization and get feedback on how you can do things, improve your work, do things in a better way. And, and I think it's, it's, it's really important. And it's one of the issues that I think goes to what Kapuha said earlier, is our ability to recruit, our ability to retain, our ability to attract the best and brightest to OHA is, is dependent on all of those things. And performance feedback is really important.
Yes, Mahalo. And, and I absolutely agree. I, I wanted to, so we look forward to working with you, Chair, because we want to make sure that we're doing our administration side as well as the BOT side. In terms of the, the handbook, that was on Corey's list of, of assignments. And, you know, small team, he's been doing a lot of heavy lifts. So what I've done is I've taken that off, off of him. And I'm going to have it be a group effort with ELT to address the, the handbook.
When can the Board of Trustees expect to review a draft of that handbook? When can the Board of Trustees expect to review a draft of that handbook?
Could we, could I get that to you by the first BOT meeting of March?
Of March? Did you say March?
Of March.
So March sixth?
Yeah, if that's the first meeting, sorry, I don't have my calendar up.
I wanna make sure it's not too ambitious. I mean, I like March sixth, but I wanna make sure that you guys have enough time to put. If before the board a quality product, so. A draft.
I, I, again, I, there, the, the handbook in and of itself is, is not terrible. That, that needs to be refreshed. It's kind of like the bylaws, right? I mean, it's not like we're not doing sweeping changes. I mean, we're gonna have to do a review. There are some things, you know, um, that. We will have to refresh, maybe some, some new language, but I don't see it as a, a total overhaul. Um, I, I want to make it a priority. I think, I think it is. Um, I'd like to say the fifth, and if we need to extend, I'll let you know, but I don't think.
Okay.
I don't think that's unreasonable.
Okay, let's shoot for March sixth then, to be able to see a draft. Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Uh, let's go to Trustee Kina.
Okay.
Trustee Kina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A, a question I have is whether we're going to have objective standards for salary increases. Based upon merit and performance. So that an employee knows that based upon his or her review and performance. That there will be an increase or otherwise in salary. Now, I've used the forms that Cory refers to, but it, they lose, um, incentive. If the forms are just turned in to administration and there's no. Expectation of being able to get a raise. So are, are we planning to produce such a scale so that the, that every employee can say? If I perform at this level, I can expect this much of a raise.
I would say yes. Um, we haven't, so again, as I, so. Ratings at the end of the year could determine that. I'm gonna use my Kama Hamaha experience. So it was, I think, at a certain level, like if you got a final rating of four or above, you could expect. An increase and there were different, um, you know, fours, fives, so different, uh, percentage increase. Depending on what your final rating was. However, at KS, part of that increase, that the percentage was. Dependent on budget at the time. So it could be like a three percent increase. I think there was a time when it went up to like four and a half. Um, but so again, so depending on the final rating. Um, there was a percentage tied to that, but it wasn't set. You know, it, it wasn't something like we're gonna say two percent forever. It was, uh, dependent on what the budget was in that year. And so I'm still needing, you know, I think we still gotta understand how that would work here.
Yeah, so I think we're getting into the, the salary, uh, the compensation review. Um, so there's, there's a couple of things that we'll be, I'll be talking about, um. But what will be coming in front of the board and, and with trustee review prior to, um, decision-making are different, um. Salary, um. Uh, well, first off, the band, like, so just re-leveling, getting people up to market, so that's one. Aspect of, of the salary review. The second one is performance merit, right? And so every employee should at least get cost of living, right, and a cost of living increase. And usually that's attributed to like. On a, a rating scale of one to five, a three would be you're meeting expectations, right? Um, even if you're, if you're a two and you're not meeting expectations, you would be put on a performance improvement plan, but you would still get. Uh, cost of living increase, right? I mean, we don't, we, we don't want people living in, working in poverty. Right? Or, or, um, not being able to sustain their families. Um, but then, you know, the, the ratings will determine. Because it is merit-based. If you're a four, you're exceeding expectations, or you're a five, you're greatly exceeding expectations. That there should be a higher percentage of compensation that's attributed to a four and to a five, right? Because we do wanna incentivize, right, good performance. Um, professionals who are growing and, and adding value to the organization. All of those things we should be recognizing. But we need a system and we need a, a salary and our, uh, compensation program that, that mirrors that, reflects it.
Well, that sounds very good. I, I look forward to that because compensation and performance have to be tied together.
Absolutely.
System to work. And we want our people to be able to have high hopes that motivate them to do their best.
Absolutely. So when I came to Oha, I was shocked that neither existed, right? That they were not in lockstep. And, and again, you know. Uh, Ekala May that the, the handbook has taken a little bit of a backseat, but. This performance management system that Cory has been working on with the team. And, you know, that this compensation review has really taken, I mean, this is, this is the big. Turning point, the, the, the transformational pivot for this organization. When we talk about retention, when we talk about recruitment. If we don't get these two things right, we will forever be in a spiral. And we will not be able to get the, the caliber of employees that this institution deserves.
I'd like to wrap this up and move on, but I recognize trustee Galitaria. Is that okay, trustee Kina?
Absolutely.
You got a question, Andrew? All right, trustee Galitaria.
Thank you very quickly. Uh, well, the, um, thank you for your ambition for March fifth, March sixth.
Sixth.
March sixth. Will that include, uh, Cory, will that include a, a, a current evaluation form? Well, what is going to be presented to the board at that particular time include? A, a recent evaluation form?
Yeah, so it's gonna be in the, the actual platform, right, which is a web-based online platform.
I don't think that's his question, Cory, no.
Well, the interim, it's, it's the form that we're currently utilizing. Yeah.
Okay, and we have any, uh, intention of bringing that current?
It's.
We, we can.
Okay, we can use the current form, but we can come back with on March fifth. Is our form, but we can set some deadlines for our organization and so have that. Um, and some expectations.
Yeah, let's, let's work together and have a form. That was the question I was gonna have trustee Galitaria. Thanks for bringing that up. Let's, um, work collaboratively between admin and the Board of Trustees on, on that form. That kind of stopgap between now and August.
Mm-hmm.
And let's, uh, be able to disseminate that to our supervisors and our Board of Trustees. Um. Let's have that by the end of the month, February twenty-eighth. We can, we can send that out. I mean, it's, it's a form that already exists, right? So we're just in the process of cleaning it up. We'll send that out and, uh, that'll allow. The, um, the trustees and supervisors to be able to do. Um, uh, performance evaluations of our staff and our, 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 here at Oha, at least for the. You know, I'm, I'm a fan of quarterly reviews, so first quarter, right, would be end of March is when we would do your performance evaluation with your supervisor. Um, April, May, June, you do another one at the end of June. And then hopefully this quantum system takes over in the summer. So at least we'll have two performance feedback sessions with our staff. Um, in the next six months before the new pilot project system is released.
I just wanted to ask Cory and Kehau, um, on March fifth, can we do a run-through of the quantum system? With the trustee, just to give them a, a, for a preview?
Yeah, we can try to.
Yeah, if, if it's not too much, we'll see. Cause you're gonna, you're gonna present the draft employee handbook anyway on that date, so. If, if it's, uh, and also want to give trustees a chance to ask if there's anything they wanna see, so maybe. Uh, well, but let's definitely shoot for the handbook. Uh, to present to the board on that Thursday Board of Trustee meeting on the sixth, and then if, um, we'll work together the next week and a half and. And disseminate, uh, performance feedback, hard copy basically form. Um, uh, by next week, Friday. Okay, trustee Akaka?
Mahalo. So when I look at the org chart, this is the line of order in which how. Whom, whom's gonna be, whoever's gonna be involved with their different groups on who they'll be evaluating and so forth. So then I'm thinking then the trustees would do Stacy's and then Stacy would do Kehau.
Yes.
All of that like that.
As a matter of fact, that's a great question, so let's segue to the org chart. You wanna do that?
Yeah.
Okay, then, then you can ask your question right off that. I think what you're referring to is who the supervisor would be in terms of devaluation.
So, and, I mean, just how I look at this.
Sure. Well, that, I mean, that is one presentation of the org chart that exists now. I have some ideas on how that, that should, can be modified potentially, but, um. Why don't we give the, the Kapuana a chance to talk about the org chart? And some of the, um, specific questions that, uh. Um, that we had asked. Um, and, yeah, and so, uh, trustees, I sent those questions out to you. Uh, that I had asked Kapuana last week to, to report on. There's like five or six bullets that, but I think they're really important. And so let's, uh, let's cover the org chart, um. Kapuana.
Okay, mahalo, Chair. Um, I do wanna make sure that I, I have an opportunity to present to the board on money Maoliola's targets. And reporting after, after the org chart. Mahalo. Okay. So in front of you, you folks have a vacancy analysis and, and summary report. Um, in addition to that, we do have the org chart, so, um, try to answer Chair's, um, requests. So first off, um, our total number of staff is a hundred and fifty-two. Uh, we have thirty-eight vacancies, so our vacancy rate is about twenty-five percent. And our six-month turnover rate is about thirteen percent, and that's all separations, right? So that, that could include, uh, retirements, it could, um, resignations or, or separations. Um, so what I wanted to do is I wanted to compare us to other, uh, peer groups or government agencies. And so we are slightly better than the executive branch, which is, um, they have a vacancy rate of twenty-seven percent. Some of their vacancies, um, especially their hard-to-fill ones are at about forty percent. And those are te- uh, typically your, um, very technical type positions, um. It could be like, um, uh, deputy AGs where, you know, that the market. Um, pays a lot more than the attorney general of, you know, at the AG's office. So there are, there are a lot of those technical positions that you're gonna see, um, high vacancy rates. I did wanna add in that, because this was just announced yesterday, um, that. Uh, the governor has put into effect what he's calling Operation Hire Hawaii. And so it's his opportunity to basically capitalize on the federal, um, layoffs. And because, um, the county and, and the state have high vacancy rates. Um, this is the executive branch's, um, attempt. At working with D-Herd to try to get as many of those displaced federal workers into, um, state vacancies. So what Governor Green is looking at doing, um, and again, you know, recruitment retention, it, it's a tricky, it's tricky. It's not easy. Right? Um, in a very competitive and tight, um, market. But what he's basically saying is that he's gonna have D-Herd, um, basically review applications of these federal workers. And basically get them reviewed and issued a conditional job offer within fourteen days. So I, I applaud the governor. I mean, it, it takes all kinds of strategies to try to get folks to come and be a, a public servant. Um, it's a thankless job, as, as many of us know, and, and the compensation is not great. Um, so I also looked at the city and county. I wanted to try to compare our vacancy rate, but there's, your, their information wasn't available. So the, the next, um, few pages is basically our analysis. Um, so Oha's twenty-five percent vacancy rate, slightly below the executive branch. And basically it just, it's, the data's highlighting that it's a staffing challenge within Hawaii's public sector, bottom line. But I wanted to share with you, um, since I've been on over the last, uh, thirteen and a half months. It has been a full-blown effort to recruit and retain, um, the staff that we have. That was one of the, the directives, um, from the trustees when I came on. What, their, the very first vacancy they, they asked me to fill was the Director of HR. Uh, we, we had our interim, and I know you all remember this. And, um, at the time, we had our, our interim general counsel, who was also our HR director. And it was, we were dealing with double-digit grievances, investigations. Vacancies, it, it was, it was a lot of work. And so, um, I was super grateful. Um, that we were able to get Cory. We actually poached him away from the Department of Education, um, to join us. So we, we got a highly qualified, um, HR director who not only is experienced in investigations. But has worked in both private and public sector. And, and it's just an amazing, if you've worked with Cory, you know, um, he's been, he's been great. But working with Cory, um, you know, we've looked at, um, all of these recruitment issues. So if you can just kind of follow along with me on, on these next couple pages. But we, we focused on attracting talent for hard-to-fill positions. We looked at how do we employ our trusted networks to recruit, um, filling key leadership and personnel vacancies. Looking at internship and pathway programs, um, revisiting past applicants. Strategic repositioning of vacancies, broadening our job visibility and smart sourcing. It's not one silver bullet. To try to get people to, to Oha is a challenge. Oha is. I, I'm gonna say it's changing, but when I came on, Oha was not an employer of choice. And that, and it, it hurts to hear that, but that was, that's the rea- that was the reality. And you know, to a certain extent, we're still trying to change that, right? It doesn't, it didn't, it took decades to get us here. It's gonna, it's not gonna be thirteen months to, to change it, so. But I, I want the board to know that we are, um, working on it very, very diligently. And so what I've, um, outlined here for you is what are administrative solutions that we put into place? Our implementation strategy and the expected outcomes, um, for each of these, uh, recruitment strategies. And please let me know if you have any, if you have any questions. I, you know, and I wanted to highlight on, on the bottom of page two, because trustee Akaka has brought this up a couple of times. That we wanna add that, um, internship and pathway programs, that the Aha Appeal can be a pathway program. And even though it's, it's, you know, intermediate high school, you know, it is future forecasting, a, a potential workforce. So we wanna add that and, you know, that's gonna have to go through our, our, our budget, um, process. Um, but many of the things that you've seen here, that you see on this page are already em- employed. So these are not new ideas. The Aha Appeal is, is one that we've added, um, but everything else is already, um, in play. Um, in turn, and I wanted to then differentiate our retention. We wanna keep our employees here. We have really amazing folks and we wanna make sure that, um, that they stay with us. So I've listed, you know, how we've been addressing workplace culture. Right? That was a big issue, um, when I came on. Equitable compensation, again, already in play, working on that very diligently. Employer, um, of choice status. Um, understanding Oha's mission and legal framework. As much as we'd like to believe that people understand the mission of Oha. We have folks here within the agency that are still not, that still were not clear on what our statutory mandates are. Uh, leadership and management, preparedness and performance management, which we just, we just spoke about. I wanna talk about employer of choice status, um, because. And, and Chair, I'm, I'm sure you're gonna hear this in, in your conversations with the different Paya. But it was really, um, being able to create an environment here at Oha. That we had a professional and stable BOT and administrative leadership. There's a lot of turnover. Reorganization, all of these things are very traumatizing to the workforce. Um, ensuring that we can, um, implement trauma-informed practices. Um, provide professional development initiatives, subsidizing parking. I don't know if that's come up in your conversations, but that was a big one when we had the return to office. Prior to that.
Sorry, can you summarize so I can get let you see that question?
Prior to that, we were charging employees to park. And so these were some of the things to address retention. Um, you know, we have been subsidizing and, and hoping to continue to do that. Um, the second part of this report is our Oha vacancy report and, um. Basically, we went through all of our vacancies and we tried to label them. Uh, whether they were critical to fill or not, the explanation and the current recruitment status. Um, at the very top of that vacancy report, you can see but in bullets. About thirty-two percent of what's on this list are pending, um, position description updates. Twenty-one percent are, we're in the process of interviewing, eighteen percent are in active recruitment, so on and so forth.
Trustee Akaka?
Wanted to ask, um, our methodology in recruiting.
So the methodology is what's listed here.
What page is that?
So it's on, starting on page two. So page two and three, I break it down between recruiting of new, new staff. And then the middle of page three, it differentiates of retaining staff. So these are all the, the different methods that we're employing.
Well, what I'm specifically asking for beyond what we have here is, um. Is it where we are constantly at job fairs? Is it where we go to the University of Hawaii or the various universities? Um, is it where we reach out to have, um. Uh, those that can be contracted until we're able to fill positions? Is it where, um, is it where, for instance, um, what was mentioned earlier in terms of. The governor's plan to hire those that have, um. Uh, are worried about or possibly are already, um, no longer working with the federal government. Um, one of the suggestions I had made is, um. Where we have those that were serving in the executive branch in Washington DC. Those that we have worked with, we are familiar with, we know they do a good job when it comes to, um, Asian-American, Pacific Islander and Native Hawaiian. Um, giving, giving us a voice at the table at different departments. Is it where we are reaching out to them? Is it where we are reaching out to them to see if they would be interested to work with us? Because I know that there are some that have chosen to remain in Washington DC. And then we have those that are moving or have already moved back here home to Hawaii. And I can't help but think we need to build back our DC presence so that we can put more of a focus back on our federal initiatives to go hand-in-hand with our county and state initiatives and build up our public policy team and our teams in general.
Absolutely. So I have reached out to Chair Kaheli to talk about potential recruitment of those who are coming back from DC to see if we could potentially recruit them. Because I do think a lot of our targeted recruitment is where we garner the, the best potential employees for us, because there's relationship already. I'm gonna ask Cory to talk about other recruitment strategies.
Thank you, trustee. So, and thank you, Mahalo. So we do go to job fairs. We've been attending the career expos. We've been going, I think it's every quarter. And then we also have been-
I ask how the response has been with those coming to our booth and any interest or even the rate of interaction to them applying?
We have had some interest. I mean, to be honest, a lot of times people are coming because they're just looking for the giveaways. But we have had some candidates who have applied through that, those career fairs. I wouldn't say that there have been a lot. I don't think that we've had per se a lot of hires. I don't think we've hired anyone who's applied from one of the career fairs since I've been here. Not to say that we haven't in the past, but I think our greatest success with attracting and recruiting has been, as Stacy said, through, you know,
Targeted recruitment.
Targeted recruitment, yeah, employee referrals. But we are pursuing those activities. And we're also utilizing temporary services. That's been another more successful method of hiring and attracting candidates.
I can't help but think as any person that would be applying for a position, one of the first things that they think of is their healthcare, their benefit. Is this something that we've looked at to revamp?
So unfortunately, because we're part of the state system, we really don't have any control over the health benefits. All state employees have the same health benefits, which is through the UTF.
There's a couple of positions, Malo Chair, Cory Stace, Malo, representation. There's a couple of positions on here that I had questions on, one of them being the, well, I'm not gonna start with the General Counsel, because I think that one has been vacant for how many years now?
I think over three years.
I think I might have a better chance of going to law school and then kind of applying for it in about five years, six years and-
Please do, because, please do, because the, the-
Two years if it doesn't work out.
We haven't gotten quality applicants to meet the MQs and to, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna skip over that one. I'm gonna go to then operations. There's operations manager position, I believe, and that's under Keau, yeah? Yeah. How, how hard has it been to fill that vacancy and what are the challenges as far as filling the vacancies? And have, have we had any response recently for the operations manager position?
So I'm, I'm gonna be very honest. The Ops Manager, that one has been vacant since before I came on board. But when I came on board, I was also minus a Communications Director. My Public Policy Advocacy, my Advocacy Director was going out. And then the Community Engagement Director became vacant very soon. So I've been focusing on, I focused on those and we got people, you know, we got some really great qualified applicants. So I am now actually interviewing. In fact, I gotta leave because I have a 3:15 PM interview today for Operations Manager. Yeah, and we, I'm, I'm happy. We have some good candidates, so.
And so trustees, if you look at the vacancy report, you, you can see what the status is of any of these open positions.
Okay, no, no, perfect. I think that's good for now, if anyone, trustee said.
No, I, I guess I'm, I'm curious. Are we planning to have like a more expense, extensive discussion on these things later, only because it's, I think it's important and it's, there's a lot of materials too. And I don't think it would be obvious to anyone looking at today's agenda that this was gonna happen. So maybe we should, you know, agendize this and have a, you know, more robust discussion at that kind of time. Yeah, yeah, I agree.
But question on the, as an example, well, talk about the six-month turnover rate. Yeah, I guess my idea is, yeah, the six-month turnover rate. My idea is, or thought is, to, to take the opportunity to meet with individuals when they do need to get exit, appreciate from them on the widest.
Yeah, so we do try to have an exit interview. In some cases, employees are willing to talk at that time, and in other cases, they decline. And in those cases, what we do is we will provide them with the exit interview form and give them an opportunity to respond at a later date. Yeah.
Looking at the org chart, vacancy report, obviously, as one example, Communications. This indicates that, but there's no, and that's probably why there's no position posted on our website to hire. Why is that the case? This, this is almost two months after the position went vacant. Why aren't we advertising for a communications strategist? What's the holdup?
So shortly after my Communications Director came on, I did ask him to update and revise that PD. Before I came on, there was an elimination. There was a, a manager position in Communications. So I believe that that position has been eliminated. What I want to do is make sure that we are catching any gaps. Like, I don't want to leave any pooh-poohs. So, you know, for that division, I tease another example where there was a manager position that was eliminated. I'm asking the Director, in this case, I worked with the interim manager, or the interim Director, to review the PDs and update, update that, update them so that we can make sure any responsibilities that aren't covered by existing position descriptions, including the director position, can be included in these. So I think the, so for, so example for IT, the senior, we turned the Systems Engineer and Administrator position into a Senior Systems and Engineer Administration. And I understand, you know, the teams are small, so you don't, you know, need that many managers. But again, there's kulianna that we want to make sure is captured somewhere. And so for this position, the Community Strategist, that is my, that has been my, that's what I've assigned to the Director. And I didn't take the time to do it myself. Like, I revised a lot of PDs, you know, brought on new positions. So he has recently turned that PD revision in, very recently. And so I'm reviewing and sending over to HR to get it posted as soon as possible. But that's my intent, right? I don't wanna, I wanna, I wanna make sure things don't fall through the cracks and it's not living in somebody's position description.
And you know, if, if there's potential vacancies in these PIA, for whatever reason, individuals that are here now that are potentially leaving in the near future, one of the ways that we can potentially prevent that or capture that is through performance evaluations. Because the individual would have had a chance to express why they might be thinking of leaving, whether it be personal issues or financial issues. And we may have the opportunity to address those things so that we can keep those individuals here. Which is why I think the performance thing is really important to do now, because there's, you know, issues that we have to address now. The final thing would be, you know, I don't know, trustees, if you guys have experienced this in the past, but going through the selection of the Chief of Staff position and really running it through the, from cradle to grave, the entire HR process. I learned a lot through that process. And we took the opportunity to reach out to individuals, whether they were unqualified for the positions, to inform them of that. I personally called every finalist to inform them that they weren't selected versus the one that was selected. I took the time to do that. I've heard from people in the community that they apply to OHA and they never hear from OHA. I haven't, I just had breakfast with someone yesterday who said her son applied for a position at OHA. She wasn't asking for any help, but she just said, never heard anything. And so, you know, we can talk offline about that specific position. She wasn't asking for any help. It was just, hey, I just want to let you know this. Like, this is our impression from the community, when people want to come here to work for OHA, that we may do, maybe we may need to look at our human resources processes and how we are acknowledging people when they apply to OHA, that they receive their application package, that there is follow-up, that if they go through the interview process and not selected, that they're informed in a timely manner that they're not selected. And so that's, I think that's something that we need to have as a discussion, because with the governor's initiative to hire potentially, you know, federal employees that are gonna be losing their jobs, that is an opportunity for OHA to do that. But our HR department has to be firing on all cylinders to be able to capture those individuals and have the best impression that we can give them when they come to OHA to apply.
And that's a base expectation, regardless, OHA or otherwise. And so that, that is our commitment. And so we can follow up to figure out why, you know, even if it's one or more, why that's happening. But we, we appreciate the feedback, because if it is happening, then that means there's-
I think from the sense of other trustees, it's, it's not something that is just unique to, to me. I've only, only been here for two months, so. Trustee Al苏sa.
Hey, Mr. Chair, mahalo. I, I've gotten the same feedback, but you know, not, not to discount the fact that Cory, you're a small team with a very heavy lift. And, and I know you're shifting now from the bylaws now to the pay and, and your interim this and interim that, and so is Keau. And so my concern, talking, speaking about Keau, and I, I believe you're currently the interim Grants Manager. So that'll be my next question. How is that process going? Because as you try to get these monies out, and then I'm gonna have more questions later on about that. But as I try to get these monies out, I know that team is not there. So I mean, but, but we're all trying to do this together, right? So we're trying to jump in, how we can help. But then it takes you away from your initial role and why we got hired and why, why we're here. And, and, and so I know we're just trying to get it done, but sometimes that's not as effective. So for me, the most important position would be the Grants right now, one of the most. Sorry.
No, no, no. I, I just wanted to mahalo you for acknowledging that, that, you know, we have people doing multiple roles, right? Again, this is, this is a turnaround effort. Turnaround efforts don't turn around in a matter of months. It's, it's gonna take some time. And we need some grace, and we are, we are trying our best. And, and you know, we do have to prioritize, right? I mean, everything seems urgent, but even in the urgency, there has to be prioritization. And so I, again, mahalo for acknowledging that there's multiple priorities. And sometimes things get dropped on us, and so everything stops, and we have to now pursue that. So again, just some grace and, and just acknowledgement that there's a lot going on. Mahalo.
Going back to recruitment, I, I think it's good if we can look at the timing like the governor had. I'm thinking about, I appreciate you mentioning earlier Kai about the legislators coming here. That's actually something I, I did ask for through the years and starting from when I came on, because I think it's important for us, for that community engagement. We want to go and visit, visit our legislators. However, how about we host them here? And then we have them tour our Kaka Akuma Kai properties and so forth, so they become more Maanai's to us and what we do. And with the timing of the legislature and their open session, a lot of the hi, hi, those that are hired are a seasonal hire. They are just for that open session time. So in us interacting with those different groups, I think it's important also to look at that and see if those that are gonna then no longer be employed, see if they would fit, let's say, community engagement or public policy or even in HR. What we shared earlier with how much everyone is doing, I, I acknowledge and I appreciate everything that everyone is doing because we have been working with a skeleton group for so long. And it's, it's a lot that's being done, a lot more that needs to be done. But it's not without a sense of burnout sometimes. And that, I think that's part of the challenge, is people have so much that they're doing that it's very kamaa. It's a heavy, heavy lift. So how do you, how do you go day-to-day, month-to-month, year-to-year with that type of energy, you know? I know with HR, it, it has been a challenge through the years with all the things that you have to do and getting us up to speed. I, I know that it is a work in progress. But I think that, you know, if maybe we can look at ways and, for instance, Kumabe, in them hiring our administrator, somebody that can be contracted temporarily or, or something to help us get up to speed, maybe in ways that other, other entities beyond just our state system, but corporate culture that has worked for them. And also keeping in mind our, our culture, our cultural things that make us who we are. Not to put more on Hailama's, but maybe that's something that can go hand-in-hand. Mahalo.
Sure. Okay, mahalo. And, and this actually dovetails very nicely with the performance management system and the salary conversation that we're gonna have. So again, one of the directives that trustees gave me was implement the strategic plan. And for us to be able to, to do that effectively, we had to set targets, benchmarks, measurements, and then ultimately reporting out so that we know what progress we're making. And I know that at the, just, you know, recently at both the WAM and FIN hearings, you know, the dashboard, you know, how are we reflecting the progress that they were making? So all of this kulianna has been given to our Senior Director of Strategy and Implementation. And so Elena is gonna share with you the work that her and her team have been, have been doing.
Mahalo Chair, mahalo Vice Chair and Trustees. So I'll talk through the key deliverables and the current status where we are with those. So for the first key deliverable, establishing a strategic plan, targets and indicators of success, that has been completed so far as a budget bill that has been submitted for this legislative session. So each of the four strategic directions has three programs or initiatives. Those have had targets, action plans and timelines all tied to budget. So that is complete. The second key deliverable, procuring an evaluation and data system for internal and external reporting. I'm happy to report as of this week, Tuesday, February eighteenth, we have already submitted that RFP to contract a data design specialist to help us put together a data dashboard. So that has already been submitted through our procurement system. I anticipate working with a procurement agent, I'm not sure what that exact person is, but they'll help guide us through that process in that. Without any further interruptions with that, I anticipate a selection of a data design specialist by the end of March, early April. Last key deliverable, developing a dashboard for transparency and accessibility. There's two parts to this data dashboard. The first part would be an environmental scan that would take into account all of the different primary, secondary and tertiary users. For example, our internal users of the dashboard might be, obviously, our Board of Trustees, our internal staff and leadership. And then our external users may be our Native Hawaiian beneficiaries, policymakers and other partners in the community. We really want to understand how these users are going to access the data, what makes sense to them, how they're gonna use it, what would be most beneficial for their work. Based on those interviews and the data that we gather, we'll be able to use that data to design what the data dashboard will look like. We want to make sure that we're building something of value, so it's of purpose and value to everyone that will be using it. So that'll be the first part. The second part will be taking those recommendations and putting that into an actual design. So that is still ongoing. I'm happy to take any questions.
Elena, can you, can you share? Elena, can you, can you share with trustees that you folks are gonna be putting targets um for the uh OHA budget coming up?
Sure. So along with SNI and all of the programs and initiatives we have to move forward, Mana'i Maoli'ola, we are putting together the targets, action plans and timelines for each of those initiatives that'll be tied to budget.
So Chair, I, I think it would be to trustee Yehia's earlier request, I think we should agendize that so that uh Yeah. Yep. Yep. That would be great. Okay. Sounds good. Mahalo. Kehao Puhu will join me at the table.
Hi, Aloha trustees. So um mahalo for opportunity to share what the plan is to ensure that the, these funds that have been obligated. We have six sponsorships and then five grants. Um, I know the ask here was to share with you folks, what's the plan to make sure that it doesn't lapse? Um, so I'll go through the sponsorships first and then uh, and then I'll talk about the five grants. I just wanna say, you know, mahalo to uh trustee Suzha for acknowledging that, you know, we don't have a grants manager in place right now. And until I brought on Lisa Von Sakona as our community engagement director, I was the acting grants manager. And, and not good at it, but um, you know, I think I've shared, we have three grants officers. You know, Stacy has shared, we have employed some of the strategies here, like relooking at applicants who didn't initially qualify, um changing up some of the MQs. We've been interviewing, it's been tough to get on some grants officers. Um, I believe we don't have any applicants right now for grants managers, so we do need to continue to be innovative in how we are addressing the gap. We have um brought on some temps to Kokoa. We had a good one, lost him. We have another one right now, but um Lisa is actively interviewing. So I just wanna share that so you guys know, like, we are making effort um to build up this team of Ekolu Vahine. It's three women who are managing all of the eighty-plus, you know, grants that we have. And so with that, and for that reason, um sponsorships, my office has taken that on. Um, Kiaala Newman, the former grants manager, uh she had been managing that, Kana'aho and the team. So since leaving, we've taken on sponsorships. Um, it's been a learning journey for myself. I feel like we're finally getting, we finally got the hang of it. We have Ho'a'ku'a'ku'a'la'ui um which we've implemented, which is now online and um we're rolling with that. So for these six um sponsorships, they were approved as part of the biennium budget. As you can see, um RM twenty-three seventeen, so this is back in June twenty-twenty-three. After that, it looks like Kiaala went ahead and cut PRs for all of these sponsorships. You know, so the, these six are, they didn't have a vendor name. Um, and I'm not sure, I can be honest, like, trying to do some research, how, what the, what the events for some of these are. I'm just gonna go down the line. So for Eri, Eri Aikau, um ten thousand had been approved for fiscal year twenty-four. So we have, you know, we learned this, this event happened in January twenty-twenty-three. It's the Eri Aikau Foundation. I think Luke Shepherd won this year, Loko'gai, the lifeguard. Um, so you know, the, we do have the PR. We have not um reached out to the Eri Aikau Foundation yet. Um, but we would like to, and you know, with the board's support, go ahead and make um payment to this organization for, you know, it's basically, it's a, it's a late missed payment. But that is, that's, that is what we would like to do.
Trustee Suzha.
Hey, Mr. Chair, eh mahalo Kehao. Uh, that was one of my questions that I was, told you guys I was gonna address later. The um Eri Aikau in particular, so that was from last year, twenty-three, right? Um, you know, Luke Shepherd, this year was landing McNamara, right? But so did they come back to us and ask for more sponsorship money? Or did they totally give up on us because we never paid them for the last uh, uh event?
So they didn't. So thank you for, I, I meant to mention, so from my understanding and just, you know, kind of uncovering and learning, uh, I my, I think how the process worked in the past was that sponsorships were approved as part of the budget and administration reached out to the organizations or staff reached out to these organizations to inform them of award. Um, and in fact, since I came on, we got a couple of letters from organizations who had received awards from s- former CEO, CEO, but never got paid. So I make up that that is maybe what, you know, these sponsorships were under that process. And this is before Stacy started to require that all sponsorships come before the board. So communication or lack of, I wanna say, is why these are remaining and, and weren't paid and I could be honest, it's taken some time to get a handle on sponsorships.
Yeah, one, one follow-up question for me. Uh, eventually, did these uh sponsorships or requests, they lapse? The purchase request rate, uh they lapse. Uh, I know some of them are coming up. Uh, and they're gonna lapse. So what do we do uh to, I guess, get it up to speed and, and do we reach out again? Do we say it's coming up? And what, what do we do on our end?
So, yep. So for this one specifically, um, you know, our comps team did buy a media package, so we do have a contact from uh, I guess on the foundation side. I think Antimira is the lead, but um that is the, that's what we'd like to do. At least for, we've already reached out. So on Gabi Pahinui, um, our staff have already been in contact with the point of contact there. So this is another event that we did not provide payment for. And Kamehama Halei Draping. So, uh, so a few things. So three out of the six, three out of the six, we have made contact. These events did happen in the fiscal year twenty-four. Um, and so we, we can proceed with payment. Also, all of these, you know, were in the former fiscal year before we started to require all sponsorships come before board and be pre Ho'a'ku'a'ku'a'la'ui. Um, so yeah, so Eri Aikau, Gabi and Kamehama Halei Draping are three that we have identified um point of contacts for and would be able to turn the PR into a PO and invoice for payment.
Mahalo Kehao, eh mahalo Chair. Thank you.
I can talk about the remaining three.
No, it's okay. Trustee Galiter?
Yeah, more processed than anything else. Um, when do you anticipate uh getting current? And then uh, we've noticed that sometimes requests come to us for an event that is like two days away. So we would like a little bit more of a running start.
Me too.
Okay.
Um, so we just um posted our, so we got our webpage up. It's been built. Ho'a'ku'a'ku'a'la'ui. And so for the, which is sponsorships, right? Sponsorships and um Ahau'ui Grants, right? We combined them into one. Um, so our, our webpage is up and there's deadlines because we are closing out, you know, where we still have the remainder of this fiscal year. Basically, the deadlines are thirty days before event. Um, that should give us enough time to intake, you know, um intake, confirm eligibility, evaluate, and then make a recommendation and bring before board. Um, for March events, we've given them a deadline of next week, two-twenty-four. But for fiscal year twenty-six, the plan is to bring them to board quarterly. So I did share that when I did the sponsorships update. Um, so we've, we have set deadlines for fiscal year twenty-six. So I will say though, for some events, it's because we wanna batch them by quarter. They could be four to six months prior to somebody's event. But that's gonna give us time to do intake, determine eligibility, bring before board and not, you know, rush. And then also process payment before their event.
I think, yeah, normally in the grants world, it's about that timeframe. So it'd be great to be current and consistent. Yeah, mahalo. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah. I just, so just to summarize, and, and I appreciate um our, our Chair Emerita for bringing this to my attention a few days ago, you know, we have thirty-five PRs. Eleven of those total one-point-six million dollars that if not converted to POs by June will lapse, will become unresolved. And so is it your intent to convert the eleven PRs to POs by the end of June?
So, not all.
Okay.
So for the sponsorships, we can confirm the three. For Papahano, Mokuakea and Hawaii State Legislature, we um, we don't have any information, like we have been right? So with turnover comes the loss of knowledge that people, you know, we're gonna take with them. So I have had conversations with the advocacy manager, the former advocacy manager, current interim to kinda grab more, gather more information about what was the intent of this sponsorship, you know, what was the event? Maybe you folks know. So those two, you know, we don't have information at this time. Um, but I would like to give my team till, let me say, I said, give ourselves a couple, uh to the end of the month, which is two weeks to determine if, you know, to try and reach out to for Papahano Mokuakea Cultural Working Group, Hawaii State Legislature, like Onipaa, I don't know if that's the peace march, um, but we have the Oh, Helen, he's here. She, she uh was part of the planning for this year's, but basically just wanna try and gather more info, because we're not sure what the intent was.
Just give us an update at the next.
Yeah, but these may, if we cannot figure it out, so these two are ones that we may cancel.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And I mean, beyond the eleven, then we then have twenty-four PRs that are for twenty-twenty-five. That obviously these are already, the board has already approved these, if they've allocated funding to it, right? And so we need um, which is to go back to the vacancies in our grants division. If we don't have the ability to do the contract, then we can't convert. We can't send that to procurement to convert it to a PR. So I mean, we're at the point where you may need to look at pulling in other staff from other divisions, SNI, other areas to help backfill grants. We cannot just continue to do this because it's just gonna get worse and worse and worse. And I recognize Chair um Lindsay for a question. Oh, I thought you had. Okay. Okay? Okay, great. Okay, okay. Trustee Kaka?
Um, with the different grants workshops that we have, is it where we are reaching out to these different um attendees and maybe they're up to speed where they would be possible applicants to apply here to fill in the grants position?
So we aren't hosting any grants workshops right now?
Or the, the previous ones, because people sign in, right, when they attend them? The ones from last year, maybe, maybe there might be some qualified people that
Around the island. We could look into that, like looking, you know, people who are working for nonprofits who might be interested in coming over.
Rating grants, managing grants, that's not for everyone. It takes a special person, just like a lot of these positions to to do with aloha. And um, I, I think I know that our grants workshops were very well attended throughout the islands here on Oahu as well. And I also wanted to ask, um, is there a process or methodology when you, um, what you folks are learning is working and not working, that you folks already have implemented or of old process or something that you're looking to do to make sure that, you know, when we're losing people, the knowledge that goes with them, that we at least have like a process, um assets on hand to use as reference?
Yeah, so you know, I wanna compliment Kiaala Newman, who was the former grants manager. She was terrific, a great record keeper. So that is one, um, you know, paya that has, they, you know, she has SOPs, she has kept records in teams, so she has a lot of that. And then I will say, I've learned as I come, I've come to OHA that got plenty of stuff missing. And so that's one of the, I guess that's a goal that I have is for us to, we wanna create continuity, no matter whose stick comes and goes. So we have the all OHA teams channel, which I'd like to, you know, it's a goal to turn that into a one-stop shop for, you know, for procedure SOPs, you know, forms, all of those things. It's, it's a bit of a lift right now, but um but that, you know, that is something that we wanna do to create continuity, um again, beyond any administration or, or board.
Uh, in, and I, I, some of this I'm, I'm taking from is um my experience with BAE through the years, you know, we've had um people coming in for chief advocate or different public policy positions and then they leave. And then we're working with a new group or a new leader. And then um what really ends up falling on that BAE team is um having to fill in those gaps and pukas in terms of uh knowledge on hand and being in alignment with things. And I, I would imagine that applies to grants in all of the different um paya here with the different departments. And um in my experience, when I had asked a, a new chief advocate, uh, previous, previous ones, I had asked, um, what are you working off of? Or even Stacy, I asked, you know, uh, what are you working off of when you're planning this, the DC lei draping and what needs to be done? And the response I got was, um, we have little to no assets on hand. So we're just going off of whomever sharing with us. And now I know because you're sharing with me how to move forward on this. So I think there needs to be something put in place so that when those that are coming on board, part of their onboarding process, that is available to them. Or those, even though they've been there for so long, they can refer back to that as, as a model or just a, a, a guiding light. So we can um not have to keep having to relearn.
Yeah, completely, hundred percent. And it's also a way, right, for, to have people, there's a place for reference, continuity, but it's also accountability. I showed you the procedure, you know, I trained you in it, and now I can hold you accountable to that. But um, that's a gap area that we're working on. Thank you. Can I just share the plan for the remaining?
What's that?
Um, am I able to share just status on the, the five grants?
I wanted, I wanted Kehao to make sure that she answered your question about the remaining balance that needs to be converted to POs.
No, I mean, I think we get the picture. Yeah, how about we do this? Um, you know, let's, let's circle back on this on like the third of April, when we have our next border trustee meeting. Clearly, you can submit a, a um, a, a grant contract to procurement on June twenty-eighth. And they can turn it into a PR in one day. And so you know, the ones that you do intend to do, we know we have some time. It would be a great goal to have those done by early June, April first. It'd be ambitious, great. Um, and then obviously then we have the twenty-twenty-five ones. I guess my only concern, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the uh rest of the board here, is that the board took the position to appropriate funds for various different programs, right? Uh, what we don't want is the recipients of those programs not being able to draw down on those desperately needed funds. Because we have the inability to do a grant and turn it into a PO and start expending resources to meet the critical needs of our beneficiaries. So that's, that's the message we wanted to pass. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Okay.
April first is the deadline for the top three grants. Um, so we're actively working on that in contract. We've completed contract discussions, but April first is the start date. So the contract should be completed within the month of March. And those organizations have been informed of the modified timeline. Um, as you know, ASP is gone, so that one is, that's good. That's the minus one-point-five million. HCA just completed review with legal yesterday. That's an important one. It's our EFA. Um, so that needs revisions and we'll go to procurement next week. The last one, I can just, you know, the founding consultant, we're not gonna utilize that whole hundred-twenty K. It's gonna be about a third of that. So um, at the end of the year, we may, we'll probably have to release or lapse, but they're OHA trust sourced funds. Um, I'm estimating maybe a hundred fifteen to a hundred thirty-five K, which will go back to the pot.
Oh, yeah. Trust, Chair.
I just wondered, uh, who took the position of executive director of Hawaii Community Foundation?
I don't think it's been announced yet. It, it, um, the announcement that uh current Micah Kanne uh is gonna go to Parker Ranch, but that's not gonna happen effective September. So Micah Kanne is still there until uh September.
Okay, thank you.
Last question.
Mahalo. Uh, kinda going back to the org chart, um, I, I'm reminded right now, when we were on Lanai, um, it, we don't have office space there, even like a temporary um place where um our different our, our people can go to, come to ask for Kokoa or see how they, they can interact with us in that way. So I, I'm thinking that, you know, that could be a position that is added onto this org chart to have somebody at least I, I'm thinking that, you know, that could be a position that is added onto this org chart to have somebody at least. I don't know, like, once or twice, at the very least, once or twice a month, whether it's like, um, a, a space that is rented in a government. Place or building, um, that they could provide those services if there's somebody, I know it's. A small population on there, but we did have somebody that used to do that work, but I think. A position like that, or even somebody to help with the work that Auntie Lucy does, you know, like. That's very, very, and we talk about institutional knowledge, but what she has, if she's open to have kukua, I think that there might be. There should be provided kukua for that.
Yeah, we could take up the conversation with trustee Alapa, um, to see, I mean, we, we have a very difficult time just recruiting on Molokai. And, um, and so hopefully when we can secure a staff member. Uh, B S A on Molokai, that person could be assigned to go to Lanai a few times a month.
Yeah, because I did have beneficiaries, at least two or three, talk to me about it.
Okay. And I can't emphasize it enough, like, we want your division to succeed and, um, knocking these grants out are super important. If you need to pull people from other divisions, do that, I'll come help you write grants, if you need grants and volunteer. And so contracts to help get it done, you know, I think if, if that's what it takes to. Get these funds out to the, the organizations and the beneficiaries that need them, then we'll, we'll do what we need to do, so, okay.
Mahalo, I appreciate the support.
Well, that was a very robust administrative update, and we appreciate it, and I hope our trustees, um. Found it, uh, very useful. Okay, trustees, um, we are going to move on to our agenda. And that will be the approval of minutes, so Lehuah, do we have anyone signed up to testify on the approval of minutes?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four and the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five minutes? Any discussion? Here in on, roll call vote, Lehuah, please.
Justia Huna is excused, justia Kaka.
Aye.
Justia Kina.
Aye.
Justia Lapa. Justi Galuteria.
Aye.
Justi Lindsay. Justi Suzo. Justi Wahee.
Yes.
And Chirka Hele.
Aye.
We have seven yes votes.
Okay, I'm going to come back to the Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment, um. And move up the two items on budget and finance, so I'll take them out of order. Uh, but at this time, the next agenda item is the Committee on Budget and Finance, uh, it's action item twenty-five oh seven. Uh, to clarify for everyone, the agenda language was kept as is for consistency, but you will see the correct amount listed when the motion is read. Lehuah, do we have anyone signed up to testify on this item?
We do have just one person signed up for this item, we have Jermaine Myers.
Okay, is Jermaine online? Oh, here, oh, hey, Jermaine. Thanks for joining us, and, um, you're recognized, the, the chair will remind. Chair will remind Jermaine, um, as, as any, anyone who has come here to testify, uh, that you have five minutes to testify. However, uh, we would encourage you to, and anyone, to keep your. Uh, testimony as, as concise as possible, you can use your five minutes as much as you want, but, um, and we, we have a lot of items on our agenda, so. Your time is yours.
Okay, mahalo. Thank you, Chair, aloha, Chair and trustees, my name is Jermaine Myers. I'm an Oha beneficiary for Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment, I am also in Nanakuli, Hawaiian Homestead, let's see. I mahalo you for, uh, supporting this agenda item, this action item in the B F Committee two weeks ago. Um, I know that Patty had provided many, um, supporters, uh, through the email. She shared those with me, um, I'm hoping that again, it'll be ratified today, um. You know, with the, with our Prince Kohio, um, festival, the sixth annual. If Oha does, um, support with funding, I would like to encourage Oha to get more actively involved with that event. Um, I know Patty is always open to sponsors asking for engagement. And so we have the Ho'oukupu where we're gonna, in front of Prince Kohio, uh, his portrait. If you guys want to provide something for that, we have legislators that are, will be on property, if you want to engage with them. Um, if you wanna bring anytime of makana, that's fine as well, um. I took pictures last year, all the way up into the fireworks, but of course, when we were running our neighborhood board, um, booth. I stopped taking pictures to just engage, um, but there was a lot of people that attended, and. But s- some of them don't wanna sit down and they wanna keep mingling around and stuff like that. But we get to see all of our classmates or all of our people that, um, we haven't seen from, you know, throughout the year. And I just like to encourage you that. If you have anything on Prince Kohio that you would like to share with our community, if you have a video, if you have an audio. Well, actually, video would be hard, but with an audio that can play for the community members to hear, if that is. Something that Oha has on its library, you know, we, this is the sixth annual, so of course, we repeat. Some of the things regarding Prince Kohio, but I think it would be interesting to get something different for those that have attended every year. Um, our community is, is diverse in the fact that. We do want support for anything related to Prince Kohio because of, you know, he establishing the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. And so we already changed Nanakuli Park, as I told you in the, a testimony prior. Um, to Kalani Anole Beach Park. And right now going through the Senate is a bill that we supported, actually, administration was there. Regarding putting up Prince Kohio portraits, any, any facility that is on D H Chal Land. Should have a portrait of Prince Kohio, but also Senator Favella had included in the bill that. A portrait of Prince Kohio should also be at the transit centers throughout the, you know. So then that way, in the public spaces, that people can see that who is important in our historical history. As far as our Hawaiian leaders, and so if Oha would like to provide. Um, funding later for a statue, cause those are the kind of things that, you know. Kamemba School had, when they had the lawsuit, they came to realize that. It is important to engage with the, with not just the indigenous, but the native Hawaiian population. And so they went from Kalihii Campus and they came out on the west coast. And so ever since then, you can see them, we have learning centers now from Kamemba Schools, et cetera. I would hope that Oha would consider putting something, a statue or something that is dedicated from Oha. To establish yourself in the community, to be frank, you guys are absent from our community. The only time we see Oha is when we have the biennium and, uh, budget. That we ask Oha to come and share with us for community engagement. And of course, when you have the Oahu Island, it depends on where it's located, it's started to come out to the Wainai side, but. Our, our district really wants to see Oha, and I think if you wanna increase your. Exposure, but also your reputation with our native Hawaiian community, you gotta get in the fishbowl with us. Right now, you're just standing on the outside observing us and making decisions for us. Based upon your observations and reports, gotta go from the think down to the heart. And the only way you can come from the heart is when you engage with us, you can hear complaints, just like we hear at neighborhood boards. But it's important to hear every. Where did I hear that before?
Mahalo, Jermaine.
Yeah, cool.
Okay, anyone else, uh, signed up to testify on this item? None? No, okay, our, uh, Chair recognizes trustee Wahee to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. Okay. Okay, I'll just, um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move, uh, to approve Oha funding for, uh. Um. For a whole, uh, and, I didn't, I didn't bring my glasses, a whole, a whole, uh. Oa Ko'a Lahui event sponsorship to the Wainai Coast Community Foundation for the sixth annual Prince. Kohio Kalani, Kalani Anole Festival on March twenty-second. Twenty twenty-five in, in the amount, and this is correct, right, in the amount of nine thousand? That one says nine, I wanted to say nine thousand.
It is correct, it is nine thousand.
Okay. Well, that's.
Trustees discussion. Here in on, roll call vote.
Justia Huna is excused, trustee Kaka.
Um, aye.
Thank you, trustee Kina.
Aye.
Justi, Alapa is not here, trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Justi Lindsay. Justi Suzo.
Aye.
Justi Wahee.
Yes.
And Chirka Hele, you have seven yes votes.
Okay, our second budget finance item is action item B F twenty-five oh four, Lehuah, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, uh, Chair recognizes trustee Wahee to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve, um, and Oha, to approve Oha funding. For a Oa Ko'a Ko'a Lahui event sponsorship to Ho'olehua Homesteaders. Association for the twenty twenty-five Prince Kohio Ho'olaulea Molokai. Twenty twenty-five event on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-five in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
All right, uh, trustee Lindsay seconds, any discussion, trustees, if not, I'm sorry. Did you wanna speak on the Molokai sponsorship event? Okay, okay, great, okay. So we have a second, uh, here in no discussion, uh, Lehuah, roll call vote, please.
Justia Huna is excused, trustee Kaka.
Aye.
Justia Kina. Justi Alapa is not present, trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Justi Lindsay. Justi Suzo.
Aye.
Justi Wahee.
Yes.
And Chirka Hele.
Aye.
We have seven yes votes. Yes, we have one person signed up to speak on this item, we have Jermaine Myers.
Hi, Jermaine.
Aloha trustees, my name is Jermaine Myers. On Matrix Two, um, I'd like to speak specifically about Senate Bill nine oh three. S D one short form. First, I'd like to mahalo trustee Kaka for questioning the bill at the B A E meeting yesterday. I do watch all of the videos, or I actually attend and just listen. I heard the comments made by administration that this bill proposes to replace the Public Land Trust Working Group. With a global master settlement working group. Really disturbed with this bill. According to this bill, the go- global master settlement working group will consist of eight members, which will be four Oha trustees. Two governor appointees, one senate appointee, and one house appointee. I also heard yesterday the comments made by the ex-senators on the committee B A E Chair Galutera. And B O T Chair Kahile. Both affirmed each other's recommendation to monitor the bill with the belief that, quote, is still early in the game. I respectfully disagree. It is not early in the game, we are either in the game or we're not in the game. Cause the game is being played. I don't believe the Eagles went to the Super Bowl thinking, let's just watch what the Chiefs do in the first half of the game. And see how much they score, then in the second half, we'll play and try to outscore them with just two quarters of play. No. The Eagles didn't do that, they set their intention to win, win specifically something. And played the game from the beginning, so the question is, why is Oha sitting passively on the side? I see the global master settlement bill like a lottery jackpot. The wisdom being suggested is that Oha should take a big, one-time lottery lump sum payment. And build your wealth from that, instead of the current annual income. Public Land Trust income in perpetuity. Documentaries of lump sum lottery winners show how within a short period of time, they spend all the monies. And return to their original impoverished condition. My concern is that if Oha takes a one-time lump sum payment, Oha will follow the path of Luna Lilo Trust. You see, they started with cash and four hundred thousand acres prime land statewide. Yet the three appointed trustees used up all the cash, and then sold. Their land assets to sustain themselves over the years, and now they just have five acres of land. In Hawaii Kai and no monies, they're a nonprofit looking for money, read their annual report. And twenty-five years ago, they changed their mission to serving non-Hawaiians now. Our future generation have a right to receive annual income from the state with the public. Land Trust pro rata income in perpetuity. The Lahui needs to ask the question, why global settlement? Why one-time lump sum payment, who will benefit, the state or Oha? Current trustees should not be usurping the Public Land Trust pro rata payments. It is the fiduciary duty to protect the trust and its assets, the annual pro rata payments are one of the assets. For future generations. I brought with me this flyer, yesterday I was with the head librarian at Nanakuli. And she said, oh, Jermaine, you wanna come with me to this, in peace as this priest, here I come. February nineteen, twenty twenty-five, five o'clock to eight o'clock at the Kamemba School Learning Center in Nanakuli Village. This was about children getting their education, these are the faces of the children in the future. They need to know that Oha is gonna have assets and monies in the future. And believing that we can just get land, and later on, maybe we're gonna have to sell the land, it's like Luna Lilo Trust. And their trustees, they didn't manage the money in the trust to take care of our kapuna, our indigenous kapuna. So it's false.
Jermaine, your time is up, thank you.
Thank you, can you guys put the clock up here, because usually when I see the clock, that's when I helps me.
Do that. Members, are there any other discussion from the community on this item? Now the Chair recognizes the B A E Chair, trustee Galutera, to read the motion.
Thank you, Chair, I move to, uh, approve, amend the approval of staff's recommendations for positions. On bills naming Oha as reflected in Matrix Two.
Trustees, any discussion? Here in on, roll call vote. Thank you, uh, sorry trustee Wahee seconded, and Lehuah roll call vote, if there's no discussion.
Justi Ahuna is excused, trustee Kaka.
Aye.
Justia Kina.
Aye.
Justi Alapa is excused, trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Justi Lindsay. Justi Suzo.
Aye.
Justi Wahee.
Yes.
And Chirka Hele.
Aye.
We have seven yes votes.
Okay, moving on to Matrix Three, this will be, um, Oha's position on bills affecting the public land trust for Matrix Three. Lehuah, do we have anyone here to testify on this motion?
Yes, we have one person, we have Jermaine Myers.
Okay, hi, Jermaine. Staff, can you make sure Jermaine has the appropriate time in front of her so she can see the, when her time expires?
It is, oh, really small. Oh, thank you. It's going to be this one. Okay.
Hold on, Jermaine. We'll let Lehu get you set up and then.
Because I think it might block.
Okay, Jermaine, you're ready. Okay, Jermaine, you're recognized for five minutes to provide, um, discussion or testimony on matrix three.
Matrix three.
Matrix three, yep.
Matrix, yes, public land trust. Aloha trustees, for the record, my name is Jermaine Myers. Um, I thank you for the ones that you're opposing, supporting, et cetera, but I did want to highlight a few in order to bring clarity to it as far as how it's impacting us and what we are concerned about as well. So number fifteen, House Bill thirteen oh seven, thank you so much for opposing, um, the geothermal on DHH outlands. Um, our main concern is the impact on the water. So when you're going to drill for water wells, are you going to tap into the drinking water? And that has been asked before, and I think I brought that up before. So I thank you for opposing the geothermal on DHH outlands, which has been designated for Monakil. Regarding the House Bill thirteen eighteen, number sixteen on the list, the governor to set aside public lands for affordable housing. My concern with this is that there's no type of clarification as far as, it's just a free-for-all public lands for affordable housing. So mahalo you for being concerned about this as well. Because unless the state is going to do what it's not doing to Oha, that when you do affordable housing, it's got to go be, it's got to go into perpetuity. It needs to be in a special flood zone, et cetera. I think whatever applies to Oha should apply to the state when it comes to affordable housing. Number eighteen, Senate Bill seven three nine, the governor land exchange on long-term diversified ag production in exchange for land for private affordable housing. I watched the legislative opening day, and yet, our senate, our president, um, our senate president was concerned about preserving ag land so that, because the agricultural land is to protect from wildfires. It's like a barrier. But yet, this bill is like wanting to usurp the ag land and create affordable housing within that land. So if we're going to create a lot of housing and we're going to remove these wildfire barriers, one of the things that coming, is keeps coming up at our neighborhood board is that we live in the west Oahu of Oahu. And we are prone to wildfires. Hiko only shuts down our district when it's concerned about wildfires. So they shut down our electricity. They started a P S P S program. And so my, my concern is that we are going without electricity whenever they're concerned about an overload, et cetera. But I don't know if you're aware of it, but when they turn off the electricity, the fire hydrants cannot be, cannot be used unless it has some type of, other type of generation in order to pump water out of the fire hydrants. We just had that, we just spoke about that on Tuesday night. Um, someone came and gave us a presentation, and they acknowledged that, that they need to create a way in order to control that. Because right now, there's a pilot program with Hiko where only the west side of each of our island, which is our district, is going to have to brunt the concerns about wildfires statewide. And so whenever we turn off our, our water, I mean, our electricity, our waters, our fire hydrants are not receiving, um, the food capacity in order to pump the, the water out of the fire hydrants. And so we are, if Oha can come to our neighborhood boards, you can actually get an insight of what kind of challenges we are facing and the fears that we are facing. And then you can actually engage from a place of understanding of what impacts us. And so we had that conversation, and you can watch the video, um, regarding the watershed and regarding the fire hydrants, et cetera. And so the repeat of the community is that we don't want to be the next Lahaina. And if, I don't know if any of you know, but Nanakuli Senate District twenty-two is the highest population of native Hawaiians in the state. And so, but yet, we're on the west side of the island. I'm not going to read anything else from my, my notes because I think that is really important for you guys to understand our fears. Kia kua pu, God bless all of you.
Thank you, uh, Jermaine. Before we move to the motion, you know, thing that, uh, Jermaine had mentioned, and, uh, Stacy, we have talked about this in the plat, past, and that's Oha taking a proactive role on our Oahu neighborhood boards. You know, that's something only and unique to this, this moku. There's, I think, about twenty-five to thirty neighborhood boards across this island. Uh, when I had a chance to serve in my other capacity, we were on every single neighborhood board in the second congressional district. We asked to be on the agenda, and, um, they were shocked that it was the first time that we had asked, uh, a member had asked to be on that agenda and give a report from the federal delegation. So maybe that's something we should consider doing. It shouldn't only be the kuliana of the Oahu trustee. We have, uh, other trustees. We have at-large trustees. I think all of us can help share in this kuliana, but I think that's something that we should consider doing. So thanks, Jermaine, for bringing that up.
Yeah, um, I, I agree with that, and, um, that was something that we were active on previously, um, with administration where, um, it was oftentimes myself, uh, then Chair Lindsay, um, Sylvia Hasi, and, uh, we would be presenting at, for instance, like the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board, and then, um, sharing with them what our intentions were legislatively, and, and they had also in turn, it was a pleasant surprise, um, offered us kokua, um, to advocate on our behalf. And I, I do feel that it's important for us to look at the high concentration neighborhoods of our native Hawaiian people and see how we can have more of a presence and that we can stay on top of their concerns and how we can collaborate. And I think part of the answer to that was having our Oahu Island community meetings, um, throughout where I really wanted to target our, our, our homestead areas, given that you would figure that most of our, a lot of our Hawaiian people are there. But, um, I think that is another way of tackling it so that we can broaden our, our, um, presence.
Do you want to add something?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So our Director of Community Engagement has been tasked with putting together a calendar of the high concentration community, native Hawaiian communities and their, their board dates and times so that we can start, um, placing people who live in those communities that work here at Oha. So again, we can share the, you know, share that kuliana between board members, um, ELT and staff.
Great.
Mahalo.
Okay. Lehu, anyone else signed up to testify on matrix three?
No one else has signed up to speak on matrix three.
Great. I will recognize, uh, Chair Galutaria for the motion.
Thank you, Chair. To, I move to approve, uh, amend the approval of the staff's recommendation for position on bills affecting the public land trust as reflected in matrix three.
Okay, I hear a second. Trustees, any discussion? Not rokaw vote?
Trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa is not present, trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
And Chair Kahile.
Aye.
We have seven yes votes.
Okay, great. We have six more to go on this agenda item. So at this time, we're going to take up matrix four. So this would be Oha's position on bills affecting natural resources and native Hawaiian traditional and customary practices. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this, matrix four, Lehu?
Yes, we have one person. We have Jermaine Myers.
All right, Jermaine. You sure? Okay, anyone else here to speak on matrix four? Okay, hearing none, uh, Chair recognizes, uh, the Chair of the Committee, Chair Galutaria, for the motion.
Mahalo, Chair. I move to approve, amend the approval staff, of staff's recommendations for position on bills affecting natural resources and native Hawaiian traditional and customary practices as reflected in matrix four.
Second.
Second.
Uh, trustee Wahehe seconds. Uh, trustee, any discussion? Uh, rokaw vote.
Trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa is excused, trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
And Chair Kahile.
Aye.
We have seven yes votes.
Okay, moving on to Oha's position on bills affecting the native Hawaiian housing. This would be matrix number five. Do we have any members of the public signed up to speak on matrix five?
Yes, we have one person. We have Jermaine Myers.
Okay, welcome, Jermaine.
Aloha trustees, for the record, my name is Jermaine Myers. Um, I, I wanted to speak on House Bill nine four four, which is part of this matrix. It's about neighborhood boards soliciting CIP and ops budget priorities from the residents, uh, where the neighborhood boards can solicit, uh, to engage the mayor. We've always had issues with the mayor, um, releasing funds to our community for CIP and operating operation, operational budget. One of the big things that we on the west side, um, we spend a lot of time with the beach outdoors for our parties, for our celebrations. And so Nanakuli Beach Park, would you believe at one time they had Clorox bottle, an empty Clorox bottle for the toilet paper in our restroom? And so these are the kind of things that happen to us when we don't get support from the mayor. And it really depends who the mayor is. Uh, Mayor Blangyardi had straightened out that problem for, but for many years, we had our toilet paper in a empty Clorox bottle. Would you like that next to your private area, having toilet paper came out of a Clorox bottle, bleach bottle? Um, the other thing that we have problem with is like, again, spending time at the beach. So we have, we had implored the, the city to, for a lifeguard stand at one of our beaches that many of our surfers had to rescue people on their own because there was no lifeguard, lifeguard stand at Kahapau, uh, park. And through us advocating and pushing and pushing, they finally put a lifeguard stand there, but only after a, a couple had come and the husband died from drowning. And so we don't want that. We want to, we really do, we're not very hard people to please in my perspective. We really just want basic stuff. Really basic. I don't, I don't think people recognize a lot of times that our Hawaiian community, we just want a simple life, but we want the basics. And many times, like I just shared with you, the basics are hard to come by, like clean restrooms. For the longest time, pokaibé, duru, everything inside the bathroom, bus up. And one of the things that we have to deal with is the high population of homelessness along our beaches that use our beaches. I really am concerned about the state not, affordable rentals is not just a solution. And transitional shelters, kauhale style, is not the solution. We need to be having dignified, quote, shelter or dignified, quote, housing. And until you provide that, they're going to stay on the beaches. And so in our coastline, they feel comfortable staying along the beaches. We do what they call, it used to be a sweep, and now they call it cleanup. So in other words, we're going to clean up the beach, so now you have to move instead of we're sweeping you off of the beach to try to create a more dignified messaging, but it's still the same. And so the city and county is the one that handles the parks. And so we would like to have the mayor be more makaala to our voices because many times it's the relationship with the, with him and or her, the mayor and the city council member. So after years and years of having problems with even restrooms at beach, at parks, they, they used our district to create a pilot program where they had uni, uni, um, unisex bu, um, unisex restroom. But that means a man or a woman can go in there. And we were concerned, our children are in there shishi, and the man comes walking in. But yet, we were the pilot program. It's in my district, in Ma'ili. And so it's just things like that. And that park that I'm talking about that had unisex, for years, that park had no restroom. And so when the children would have popwana, they would have to go pee in the bushes. That's how, that's how hard it is when we cannot engage. And at our neighborhood board, we hear the ground level on a monthly basis because our senators and our representatives, they're at the state capital. And unless they engage, and they engage with us on a monthly basis at our neighborhood board. So it's at the neighborhood board level that I feel we can engage with our leaders, and that's why I'm asking Oha to be there. And this bill is really important to us. Kia kua pu, God bless all of you.
Thanks, Jermaine. Do, do we have anyone else, uh, signed up to speak on matrix six? I'm sorry, matrix five, run housing, matrix five. Okay, great. Uh, Chair Galutaria, you recognize, read the motion.
The bills affecting native Hawaiian housing as reflected in matrix five.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Wahehe. Any discussion? Not rokaw vote?
Trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka.
Turn up the mic. Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa is excused, trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe. And Chair Kahile.
Aye.
We have seven yes votes.
Okay, moving on to Oha's position on bills affecting native Hawaiian health. This is matrix six. Lehu, do we have anyone signed up to this, uh, provide, um, public feedback on matrix six?
Yes, we have one person. We have Jermaine Myers.
Hi, Jermaine.
Aloha.
Jermaine, you're going to adjust the, um, computer just so we make sure we can capture your full video and it's.
Tiny, tiny, yeah. Yeah.
We want to make sure everyone can get a chance to see you.
And it's red too. Yeah.
Okay, Jermaine.
Aloha.
Aloha.
My name is Jermaine Myers. There's just one bill that I really want to highlight because it's from my representative, Rep Kila. So House Bill nine five seven, and I'm mahalo you for the support of this bill. It's regarding laulau te. And the reason why he wants laulau te is, if you go on the internet, you're going to see like TikTok and everybody is always imploring things about food. And he just wants to put us on the map. The reason why he chose laulau is because taro. So he wants to encourage people to grow the production of taro and support our taro community. And I think that's one of Oha's mandate, is to support the production of taro. And so this, he was really, uh, happy with doing this, but he was kind of afraid of being criticized about it. Like, why did you choose laulau? But he wants to start the conversation. And if it's going to choose a food, he wants it to be on Hawaiian food. And so laulau is a way to help encourage our taro production. And he also wants to drop that over into Department of Education where we have all kinds of Hawaiian food that for the schools, um, to, you know, to eat. And so not just poi, but taro, laulau, everything. And so I just want to highlight Rep Kila. He's just an amazing, amazing representative. He's, he's not afraid of coming to our neighborhood board. Every representative before him would come the first time, and then they leave, and then only during election year, they come back. In his rookie year, in his freshman year, he came every meeting, and he engages, he communicates. I can go over there and charge my phone at his office. I'm at the state capital. He's just an amazing person, and when you go by the legislature, please, please, um, visit him. Uh, he's the transportation chair on the House side. Um, we were just engaging this morning by text about some of the bills that, um, didn't pass in the, that he had introduced. But, um, But, and I'm gonna maybe send it by an email to you guys, because I asked him, just bring it back up again next year. Just bring it back up again next year. So, if this bill doesn't go over to the Senate side, let's, let's advocate for things like that. Regarding health, I wanted to, if I have, yes. One of the things that I was surprised that OHA wasn't at the conversation, and I did, I was gonna bring it up in education, but there's other things that I wanted to talk about there, but it's related to food regarding health. The Education Committee had this bill that had to do with, I'm gonna jump it off of the laulau. Is that for the procurement, to increase the procurement at the Department of Education, because they're having trouble with providing local food because of the procurement cap. And so, they increased the cap. But during that conversation, it really came up to me how OHA can actually start a database of our Hawaiian farmers and get them tied in to this procurement. Because that's part of the economic development of our Hawaiian community with the Hawaiian farmers. Link them up with the DOE. Because basically, they can forecast their crop, and they can now turn it into the schools. They can increase their crop, because if they're gonna have an invoice, or they're gonna have a contract with DOE. And so, that is something that was a really important conversation and build that went through. I hope that it goes over on the House side and it passes on that side. But that was something that I wanted to highlight with you, because it's not on your matrix. So, keakua pu, God bless all of you.
Thank you so much Jermaine. Okay. Anyone else signed up to discuss or provide any discussion on matrix six?
No one else has signed up.
Okay, Chair Galutaria, you recognize, read the motion.
Thank you Chair. I move to approve, amend the approval of staff's recommendations for position on bills affecting native Hawaiian health as reflected in matrix six.
Trustee Wahai seconds, members discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka?
Aye. Yeah.
Yes, trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa is excused, trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Souza? Trustee Wahai? And Chair Kahile?
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, moving on to OHA's position on bills affecting native Hawaiian education, this would be matrix six. Excuse me, seven, getting confused here. Do we have anyone sign up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have one person, we have Jermaine Myers.
Welcome Jermaine. And just, you can hit the button to turn on your mic, okay?
Thank you Chair.
You recognize.
My name is Jermaine Myers. House Bill eighty-seven regarding free lunch for all enrolled students in public schools. If this passes through legislature, which I'm not sure it will, but if it does, one of the things that was excluded from it was the charter schools. So, especially the Hawaiian charter schools. We have one of the largest charter schools in the island, Kauaihona, in our district. So, if the state will now have funding, if they will provide funding to get free lunches, I would like Hawaiian charter schools to be included on it. So, that would be something for next year, if, if it does get, House Bill eighty-seven does get passed, or if it gets passed on the Senate side. Teacher workforce housing stipend program for rural and underserved public and charter schools, that's in my district. So, to have this stipend would really help to retain teachers. I'm in conflict with this bill and stipends for teachers, because about retention, it's about retaining mainland teachers. And so, for me, if the local teacher has to go without a stipend, you know, because you're already here, you're living here, this is your residence. And they're trying to retain the mainland teachers, I have a problem with that. Because what's the message that you're sending? We wanna try to retain the ones from the mainland, but the local ones, you know, we all have to deal with the housing prices. So, but we do have a problem with retaining teachers in the rural area if they're out, you know, because we need more teachers than what we already have locally. And so, we do have to bring in the mainlanders, so I'm kinda in conflict with this one. But I just want you to know that it would help my district, because we are the underserved. Keakua pu, God bless you.
Thank you Jermaine. Anyone else to speak on this item?
No one else has signed up.
Okay, Chair recognizes Chair Galutaria to read the motion for matrix seven.
Mahalo Chair, I move to approve, amend the approval of staff's recommendations for position on bills affecting native Hawaiian education as reflected in matrix seven.
Trustee Wahai seconds, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka? Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa is excused, trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Souza? Trustee Wahai? And Chair Kahile?
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, moving on to OHA's position on bills affecting native Hawaiian economic development, this would be matrix eight. Leihua, do we have anyone signed up to speak on matrix eight?
No one has signed up to speak on this matrix.
Chair recognizes Chair Galutaria to read the motion for matrix eight.
Uh, thank you Chair, I move to approve, amend the approval of staff's recommendations for position on bills affecting native Hawaiian economic development, matrix eight.
Second.
Trustee Akaka seconds, members discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa is excused, trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Souza? Trustee Wahai? And Chair Kahile?
Aye.
We have seven yes votes.
Okay, moving on to the last item on the BAE agenda, this would be OHA's position on bills affecting HRS Chapter six E, the IVKUPUNA. This would be matrix nine, do we have anyone sign up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair recognizes Chair Galutaria to read the motion.
Mahalo Chair, I move to approve, amend the approval of staff's recommendations for position on bills affecting HRS Chapter six E, IVKUPUNA, as reflected in matrix nine.
Second.
Trustee Akaka seconds, members discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa is excused, trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Souza? Trustee Wahai? And Chair Kahile?
Aye.
We have seven yes votes.
Okay. Just keeping me honest, have we accomplished our agenda items for the approval? We have, yeah? Okay. Moving on to agenda item number C, this would be action item twenty-five oh three, this would be the approval for the formation of an ad hoc committee to examine current OHA staff salaries and to make recommendations for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six and the fiscal year twenty twenty-seven by annual budget. Leihua, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, uh, trustee Souza, can you read the motion? And then we'll put it to a discussion. So, Chair recognizes trustee Souza to read the motion. Uh, it's item number C, action item twenty-five oh three.
All right, Mr. Chair, I approve, I move to approve the formation of an ad hoc committee to examine current OHA staff salaries and to make recommendations for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six and fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven by annual budget. Purview, the purview of the ad hoc committee is for the Board of Trustees, BOTO Board, BOT staff and the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, OHA, Director of Human Resources, to work together to examine current OHA staff salaries and to make recommendations for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six and two thousand twenty-seven by annual budget to the OHA BOT. Uh, members, the members of the ad hoc committee is proposed as follows. Trustee Keone Souza, trustee Carmen Hulu Lindsay, OHA Director of Human Resources, Corey Nakamoto. Uh, trustee Keone Souza will serve as the Chair of the Ad Hoc Committee, and trustee Carmen Hulu Lindsay will serve as its Vice Chair. Uh, the term and duration, uh, the term of the ad hoc committee expires at the completion of the assigned task or at the discretion of the Chair of the Board of Trustees, subject to later adjustment, but in no event later than May second two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, I hear a second. Trustees discussion before we go to our kapuana for her, uh, final item on her agenda. Okay, I just wanna start off by saying, as the, you know, working with staff and as the author of the ad hoc committee, you know, it's, it's clearly apparent from the discussions we've had at this table and, and the seriousness that the administration is taking our ability to recruit and retain, uh, and to also improve the morale and the workplace, the culture and environment here at OHA, that one of the, if not the most important issue amongst the over hundred and fifteen, hundred and sixteen full-time employees that we have here, uh, is our current staff salaries and the existing compensation. I, I believe that all of us realize that having a fair and competitive compensation structure uh, is absolutely essential to attracting, retaining, and supporting a high-performing workforce. We talked about the high cost of living, uh, here in Hawaii. And I think what is critical is that our employees feel valued, they can feel valued in various different ways, but one of those ways at the end of the day is to provide them a fair and equitable wage. You know, people come to OHA to seek employment for various different reasons. And, and oftentimes, that reason only isn't um, because of the opportunity to have a, a job and a fair wage. It's to provide for our lahui and to make Hawaii a better place for our beneficiaries. But the reality is, is that our staff have to survive in this environment that we live in. And as inflation and rising costs, uh, childcare, and all the other things, housing, healthcare, that they have to deal with, the reality is, is the current staff salaries as they exist um, are making it very, very difficult for us to keep our staff here and the ability to recruit staff. I know the administration is working on this issue as well, but I truly believe that that has to be a effort that ultimately is collaborated with and driven by the Board of Trustees. At the end of the day, we are the body that sets policy, we are the body that provides the budget um, for that. So ultimately, we have to approve that. And we should have an opportunity to help shake that. And I have confidence in both trustees Souza and trustee Emerita Lindsay to work with our Head of Human Resources and the additional staff to complement the efforts that already have been put into this to allow the ad hoc committee to do its work and to bring back to this board fair and equitable salary increases that will demonstrate to our employees that we take that issue seriously, uh, and that we're gonna do everything we can to address what is their, really their number one issue in the discussions that I've had with various different pia. And I think, you know, trustees have, you've heard those issues yourself. So, that's the thought behind this effort. And I'm happy, before we go to our CEO, to open it up to any of our trustees that wanna be recognized on this particular issue. Trustee Souza?
Hey, mahalo Mr. Chair, I, I would agree with everything that you said. I also wanna add that we do acknowledge the fact that, and it's reached after today's presentation and hearing that there's gonna be a performance evaluation program set up in a long-term type of deal to evaluate our performance and, and a program implemented to, to make ourselves better at the end of the day. And I, so not to discount the fact that administration is already working towards that goal. And if this committee is established by vote today, we will be sure to collaborate. And with not only the members that are a part of the ad hoc, because there's gonna be kapuana and it's certain people who are not named as support staff, as a part of ad hoc, that will provide information as well as state entities where we have to do our due diligence and get this information from. And, you know, overall, I think what we are finding, it's, it's, the Board of Trustees also has to remember that it's a recommendation to the board. But the intention is to provide a recommendation to the BNF Committee, which provides the agenda uh, for an action item to the Board of Trustees, who ultimately make the decision. Uh, and so, you know, this is gonna help in the future, uh, which is of course what Stacy's working on as well with recruitment and retention. So, that's what I wanted to say, mahalo Mr. Chair.
Trustee Souza, any other trustees? Okay. Uh, our CEO's, I'm, I'm sorry, trustee Lindsay.
I just wanna say that I'm looking forward to working, to checking different comparables to, to make sure that the staff is getting paid fairly. But I do lean on our administration to give us the depth of what we should be looking at and getting assistance from them, so that we can come together as one agency and do the right thing for our people, so that our employees are happy as they come to work each day.
Yeah, I, I would completely agree. I'd also highlight that there are, there are clear pay disparities in uh, what you could, I guess categorize as legacy pia individuals and, and individuals that have been here a long time, pia that have been here a long time versus pia that have been created recently. And so, there's a clear disparity in that. And our, our pia, legacy pia staff, they see that, they recognize it, it is a problem, and we have to address it. Otherwise, we're going to get staff that are gonna continue to leave OHA, and we just can't. We, we, that, you know, we have to have an organization that has a robust, you know, robust staff pia, otherwise, they're not gonna be able to do the work that they're able to do. Clearly, in grants, we have an issue that we need to resolve, and it's largely due to staffing. Despite the Herculean efforts of the three individuals that are there, they need help. And, and we can't, we can't wait much longer, so, thank you trustee Lindsay.
Yeah.
Let's see, go ahead.
Mahalo Chair. Yeah, I, I'm perplexed by, by the motion. You know, coming on to OHA and addressing salaries, it was administration who ensured that we had subsidies for parking. It was administration who put forth the cost of living allowance to try to bring at least some relief this past fiscal year, because prior to that, the previous three years, there was nothing that was provided to our, to our staff, which is problematic. The, the directive from the board was to effectuate the strategic plan. In order to do that, a pia needed to be created, strategy and implementation, which I did. When you put a new pia into effect, to bring people on at the same low wages that are already problematic, just exacerbates the existing issue. So, to be competitive, to bring on folks that could hit the ground running, yes, there's gonna be a pay disparity. However, that's with the notion that there are other initiatives in effect in parallel, because one cannot wait for the other, they both have to happen simultaneously. We need to move on the strategic plan, we need to get qualified individuals to move that work simultaneously. We need to get the performance management system onboard, we need to get the salary review. All of those things have to happen simultaneously. It makes zero sense to bring in a new pia at low wages where the rest of the, of the agency is already struggling with. When you bring in a new pia at higher wages, it lifts, it requires the lift of the whole organization. So, that's, that's the rationale. So, it, it's not to create disparity, it's actually to create an urgency to raise all salaries. And so, you are very correct, Chair, in, in saying that this body is the policymaking body. And according to Series Three Thousand Administration, within your own executive policies, the CEO is the chief executive officer that oversees salaries. And that is the work that I have been doing, along with our, our HR director. And I've provided for you folks a timeline and the deliverables. And so, I guess the question that I have for you Chair and, and maybe others on the board is, what is the problem we're trying to solve with this ad hoc committee? Because if it's, if it's to review the budget, that would definitely happen in the timeline. And there are several, if you look at page four and five, there are, and six, there are several key dates in which there would be review and comment by the board. Well, first off, on page four, two point one, the first draft, we go to the BOT Chair and the BNF Chair, which I think would be a. which I think would be appropriate as the board chair and and the content, subject matter expertise of budget and finance, that you folks would have a pre- preliminary report provided to you for your first review and comment. And then any feedback, we would then make sure that we're reviewing for our second review um by March twentieth and then a final review before it goes to the BF Committee. So I I wanna ensure that this board, that there's, there's no trying to shirk or subvert or not make apparent the work that's being done. We wanna make sure that we're getting feedback on a timely and a frequent basis and and if if the issue is that you don't want the Chair and the BNF Chair to be the reviewers and it would, you would prefer it be um trustee Suzha and trustee Lindsay, we can, we can substitute those, but I I I'm not sure by adding another working group, starting from scratch, how that, how that helps. Um what's even uh more problematic is that, again, the the kuliana of the salaries falls under the CEO and I'm not even on the working group. Um and so for the trustees to direct staff um to do this administrative work goes totally against the policies that this board has put together. So I'm I'm very confused with I I get, I understand that we want the board involved and they absolutely would be based off of this timeline and the deliverables. So I'm, I'm not sure what problem we're trying to solve with this ad hoc group.
Are you complete? Are you done?
Y- yeah, I'm just, I'm, yeah, would like to understand the problem.
Trustees, any discussion? Chair, uh trustee Aquino?
Thank you very much. I I fully understand and agree with the urgency that we all have to turn OHA into a place where we have the highest level of talent and the highest level of morale. And I think we've all discussed, at least earlier today, the importance of compensation in the recruitment and retainment, retaining of the best workforce. We also have Aloha here. We we want our people to be well compensated and rewarded for their work. And I think in this urgency, it's easy for us to overlook process. It's important for us to remember that the board exists, exists to create, establish policy at the highest level and that the administration exists to execute that policy. And one of the policies we have at OHA is that we, as a board, have one employee. We recruit that employee, we hire that employee, we set the salary for that employee, and that's the CEO. That employee, the CEO, is charged with the responsibility and given the authority to hire the rest of OHA. And an extremely important factor in being able to perform the role of a CEO in hiring, firing and recruiting and retaining employees is the setting of salaries. There, there's a whole range of strategic issues that goes into that, that actually are are not gonna be known outside of the administration. But um I'm thinking that in our eagerness to solve the the problem, that we may be ignoring the process here. I I'd like us perhaps to defer this item uh so that we could get some further input and and review the process we have in hand. Um what I'd rather see happen is that we give our affirmation to our CEO to pursue the job that she says she's trying to do in terms of revamping the and supporting the workforce at OHA and uh see what she presents to us in terms of our directive to get salaries up to the level that will make us wo- world-class as an employer. What was the term you used?
Employer of choice.
Employer of choice. So I I would be for supporting the CEO in giving leadership to establishing the appropriate levels of salary for each employee and uh have her report back on that.
Thank you, trustee Aquino. Trustee Lindsay?
Um I respect everything that um trustee Aquina stated, and I have the highest regard for our CEO, so that is not what's on the table. I think it's a great idea um that we have an ad hoc committee while the administration is working on their part, because they're, they're gonna dive more into depth than I think we are. But we, we can go into our different directions, then we can come together and see how we line up. You know, we're, we're concerned, basically, there has nothing been done in the board suite in thirteen years. So and yet I I see um the different salaries going up on administration side. And I, it's not that I see, but the employees in the board suite sees that. And you know, they're, they're grumbling, grumbling. That's where the morale problem is. So if it's, if it would help the situation for them to know that the trustees are interested enough to create an ad hoc committee to look out for their interests, then I'm all for it. And I thought it was a great idea, Chair, that you recommended it to trustee Suzha and I. Thank you.
Thanks, uh trustee Lindsay. Do you have something, trustee Akaka? I'm sorry, trustee Wahai?
Um well, yeah, I'm, I guess I'm more curious about how everything would work together. Um because ultimately, the pig can just make a just make a recommendation to to the board. Or it's it's an ad hoc.
To trustees.
Okay, that, I mean, they can.
It's only a recommendation.
Yeah, so admin's still gonna make their recommendation, right?
Yeah.
Um. I mean, and and from there, I I guess I'm con- uh what is the board gonna do? Like um, all we can do is, we can approve a budget, I guess. Um but ultimately, admin's gonna implement what the salaries are and um I don't know if we can for, I mean, what it, like if the board decide, i- i- if the recommendations are different and the board decides they're gonna go with the pig's recommendations and they, they pass the budget accordingly, I feel like admin could still.
We can put policy in place.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I I would be interested in getting a different perspective on these kind of things. Um I'm just more concerned of like what happens after uh I don't know, I mean, I'm not against it, I'm just more concerned that what happens after and how legal is it um? If that's all taken care of, then I don't see any harm in getting a second recommendation or you know, what what comes out of it. But as long as we're sure that we're legally okay with how we proceed, you know, going forward with this, then uh I don't have any problem with it.
Trustee Akaka?
Mahalo, um it's interesting to hear the frustration um in your words and tone with um this. Um it's another perspective. I, it does remind me of some of the feelings of the trustees when administration goes and does things that maybe is the role of a trustee. So i- it's kinda interesting to hear it on the flip side. Um but would it be where it would mitigate this if you were added onto this ad hoc, so you could have a voice at the table and give perspective?
Sorry, there's, mahalo. Um I I think what's confusing, thank, thank you for the the question. I think what's confusing to me is you know, you've heard over and over today, right, that our administration teams are strapped. HR is a very small team. I've had to take the handbook off of Corey's plate because he's overly taxed and under-resourced. And now we're gonna have him doing two paths, which ultimately, I I'm, I'm hearing from you folks that there's gonna be multiple options or perspectives, whatever options and perspectives that come from the Board of Labor Statistics, that come from the other peer groups, that's the data. So regardless if, like, I don't understand, like, how how divergent is the, is this ad hoc group going to get from Corey? And I, and, and I, I think it is um to start at the, at, you know, reading the AI and starting at the beginning when we already have this in motion is problematic, because we are so overly taxed and it it's just one more, like, unnecessary step um to to have him have to do this other working group. When I think, I mean, if there's anything that's divergent on this timeline, the deliverables, the timeline, what would be different from the ad hoc? What would the ad hoc do differently than what we're already proposing in this timeline and the deliverables? Is there anything that, when you folks looked at it, that you thought, nope, the ad hoc group would do it absolutely different or in some unique and innovative way that wouldn't accomplish what this timeline and deliverables do? Because if it, for me, what I'm hearing is that you folks wanna make sure that the trustees are in front of this, that you have say, and I'm, if there's anything.
I would say, I would say, this is the most that I've been here, that we've talked about salaries at this board table. The fact that this ad hoc committee was on this agenda item prompted the administration to present to this board your current compensation plan. And so that, I think, is a good thing. And I would hope that every single employee here at OHA, both on this moku and throughout the state, is watching this. Because we take this seriously, not just the administration, but also the board. I don't see why this ad hoc committee cannot help to complement the efforts that we are doing. In a perfect world, I think this would have happened six, eight, nine months ago. We are under a very short timeframe before our budget needs to be approved. And the opportunity for um our trustees that have experience in this and are willing to help um take their time and efforts with their staff to do this, I think helps your um possible issue that you have with the lack of support and the lack of individuals that, because they are tasked doing many other things as well.
Exactly.
What we don't wanna do is have a recommendation that this board is not able to adopt and the trustees do not have the subject expertise that they need to make a recommendation that we feel is important for our staff. I realize, uh hold on, uh CEO, that compensation is not just an administrative function. It directly impacts OHA's ability to recruit, retain.
Yes.
And by the Board of Trustees being involved in this, we can ensure that those salary structures align with OHA's objectives and mission. I don't see how it hurts. I see how it complements our efforts.
I I, and I guess that's my question. Based off of the timeline and the deliverables that I've shared with the trustees, is there anything different that this ad hoc group would do differently? That that is unique and different from what was already being proposed, other than maybe the names? So maybe it's not Chair Kahle, maybe it's not Chair Alapa, and maybe it's inserting, you know, uh Chairs, um Chair Suzha, Vice Chair Suzha and trustee Lindsay. Because if I.
Well, I think there was a specific reason why I didn't feel like I should be part of the ad hoc committee, nor should uh Chair Alapa as the BNF Chair be part of that committee, nor yourself as a CEO. I think it should be an opportunity for our two trustees, as well as uh one of, and the most senior uh member of your team um in charge of human resources to be able to work together on this, right? They have a big, a big job to do in terms of looking at every single salary, every single position we have at OHA, comparing that salary to industry standards, whether they are Bureau of Labor Statistics standards, whether they are the State of Hawaii's Department of uh human uh resources uh standards. Um those are very important standards.
Yes.
That was a standard we used here before, that a previous CEO, a previous time, went away from. And that has affected our staff salaries. And so that's very important to us.
Yes.
In addition, those positions may not be um reflective of what each individual staff member is doing today in terms of the position description. And so that needs to be looked at as well. There's a lot of work to do, and I think our s- our trustees are willing to help do that work as well. And at the end of the day, I think we all come to the same conclusion, which is, we would like to make sure that we have appropriate staff salary increases that um ensures fiscal accountability for the Office of Wine Affairs. But it, it sends a message to our staff that that uh we take their staff salary seriously. I don't see how that hurts.
No, and I don't think you need an ad hoc to make that statement and to demonstrate the, the board's commitment to this. I think we have a shared commitment to this. The process is already in place and is moving. All I'm asking is, is what's being proposed in the existing process? Does it not accomplish what you're proposing? Because if it's, if the reviews and the input are not from you and Chair A- uh Alapa, then sh- why can't we just insert uh Vice Chair Suzha and trustee Lindsay into this existing process? Why do we need a second process on top of this process? Because it, I I think it accomplishes exactly what you're saying without creating an additional uh working group. It, the the objectives that you want to ensure that the trustees are inserted into this process, giving feedback, reviewing the work that's coming out as the deliverables that are listed here, that process exists. I'm not sure.
What, what the process doesn't exist is for the trustees on this ad hoc committee to take a formal role in this process and to get down into the weeds in the process. That is what it doesn't provide in a, in a, in a, in a way that can help shape what those salary increases are.
So we.
And at the end of the day, it's, so it's a decision for this board to make.
Absolutely. But, and I, I just wanna be clear, when you say get into the weeds, I mean, the subject matter experts are gonna be fiscal, it's gonna be legal compliance, it's gonna be um human resources. Trustees' role is really gonna be looking at, are these options sufficient? Are they meeting the the goals and the objectives of the board? That, that's the same, the same things that the board Chair would be doing and the board um Chair of Budget and Finance. Same, same, the, the process is exactly the same. I don't understand why we need a separate process on top of this process. If it's nobody is saying that the, within this process, that the board members are an after the fact. The, this is not like wait till the actual committee meeting and then that's the first time that they're gonna see it. It's, that's not the case.
And there's, there's nothing that says that your process can't be part of the board's process. Your staff, that your uh the individuals working on those teams can work with trustees Lindsay and trustee Suzha.
It already exists. I I'm not understanding why there has to be something new that exists, to, to exist, when we can accomplish the same, the same goal.
Well, we mahalo you for your comments. Trustees, any other discussion?
Chair.
Trustee Galatera?
Yeah, Chair, you know, I hadn't planned on, on speaking to this, but I'll, I'll be voting in favor of it. I just wouldn't want the um Kapo Hana or anyone in the administration to to feel threatened by this, because this is, uh, more hands on deck sometimes is better. And the, the ad hoc might come back and say everything is porno, but they need to take a look at it. So this is uh, it's certainly, I think, an exercise. We are very clear, that the board is very clear on the delineation of authority here. I, I think for the short time I've been here at OHA, there's been two, there's been a wall put up that we're trying to, I think, not necessarily take down, but add more heft to the process. So in, in that particular case, I just, I I think that it is a good thing. I think that it's, not only is it a good thing, but it's got an end game to it, right? I mean, there's something in here that says it's pow after a certain time, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's true, trustee. The um committee will complete its work and submit it to the board by the second of May. Um then it would dissolve and then the board would um vote to adopt the ad hoc committee's recommendations at its May fifteenth Board of Trustees meeting, which gives us about forty-five days before our budget needs to be adopted.
Sure. And and lastly, through the process, there will be the uh conversation going on with Kapo Hana too, right? So it doesn't end and it doesn't, it kinda almost comes together. Okay, well, I just wanted to be clear in my mind. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, any other discussion? Trustee Suzha?
Trustee Galatera, just last time I let you go before me, took everything I was gonna say. But uh, wh- what I wanted to say was, you know, um uh Stace, um this doesn't discount or discredit what you guys are doing already. Um the whole objective of this thing, yeah, there is an end goal, trustee, like you were saying that. I think we're all funding for the same end goal. Uh there is also a timeline and um the timeline uh for us as trustees to do our due diligence. Uh if we're looking at fiscal year twenty-six, for example, and then uh budget uh drafts and everything, that timeline that you guys pretty much established, right, at this point? At this point, um, when we come with that recommendation, um, see if there's nobody involved on our side. And I know you're presenting another option uh, for us to be involved, but I think ultimately, we have a fiduciary obligation, right, as trustees? And 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 recommendations are always going to be uh, be given from administrative staff. And and I think in the past, what has happened and the trend that I saw is that the the committees. Uh, the agendas were pretty much put together by administration. And I think by the time it got to this board table, uh, I think it got uh, the misconception was, I I guess. That we were just going to vote yes, because all the due diligence was done already. And and the trend has been the board had voted yes in support, because oh, we take it for granted that administration did what they needed to do, which we trust. Right? And there's new leadership here, which we trust that is going to get the job done. But I think just overall, I want I want to make make it clear that we are. Offering a hand here. Uh, we didn't address earlier that there are vacancies, there's interim this, interim that. And we're merely offering a hand. We're not trying to get in the way. We're not trying to take the credit for this. We're not trying to be the heroes. We all want the same thing. We all heard from staff on both sides, our own trustee aides, as well as administrative staff who's been here a long time. And especially addressing the current uh vacancies that that, you know, certain individuals that just came in, who are getting paid. Two times amount, three times amount, or some of our guys who've been here for a long time. So overall, we're going to be working together. And 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 we're al- also going to be collaborating with what you guys already did, right? And so that's where Corey comes in as well. If this is what we did. There should be no division here. There should be no division. I think as we dive deeper into the weeds of this issue. There seems to be a division that comes up or uh, you know, unspoken like that's that that side and this side. There should not be that. And by doing something like this, no matter what the title of it is, right, administrative, whatever implementation or ad hoc committee. At the end of the day, it's going to come to this board table and the board will make the ultimate decision, no matter what happens prior to that. And yes, you're right, addressing the data, we may have the same data. So I would hope. That Corey, as being a part of the team, if this does get approved, that he will bring to us what you guys have already done. Because we don't want to do double duties, right? I think that's one of the issues, right? And and so we don't want to be doing that, be repetitive. We want to make sure the data that we have is current, right? And and the recommendation that we make to this B N F committee i- is 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 legit, right, at the end of the day? And then we take care of employees and we retain our employees. So mahalo, Chair, mahalo Kapu Hana.
Trustee Akina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I- in all change, there's a bit of a dance, and I think there's a dance going on here. Trustee Suzza spoke about us being one rather than having different sides. But when you dance, you have two partners and each one needs to know the steps and the roles. We as a board in the end have all the authority. We have the fid- fiduciary duty and we have the the right and power to act. Not only that, we have already exercised, and I want to commend you, Mr. Chair, and the rest of the board. We've already demonstrated to the employees of Oha that we aloha them, that we care about their very highest and best. Anyone who's watched these proceedings can pick that up. So I I congratulate you on that. I I just want to make sure that in this dance, we don't confuse the two different roles. Our role is to govern as bo- board members. And we're trying to figure out where that borders along the lines of um, management. Governance and management are two different tasks. When it comes to using a tool of management, which is the salary structure, that's something we want our CEO to have. To be a powerful CEO. And um, I I would say that the plan of action she's presented to us is a decent plan of action. She's going to have to be accountable to make sure that she delivers. And what we're basically telling her is, we want you to deliver on this. Not because we doubt you. We want you to deliver on this because we want our employees to have the best compensation. We want to have the highest capacity to attract and retain the best talent. That's what we're telling her. That she already has that mandated responsibility and I would say, let's let her do it and let's support her in that. Now, it's nobody's intention to interfere with her and I know that the intention of the committee is to kokua. But when we take a step by saying, we mandate the existence of an ad hoc committee. That will work with one of her employees as a key member of that committee, we're actually micromanaging at that point. That that's her responsibility. We've given her to determine what her employees do, what the Director of Human Resources does. And so that's just one example where that might interfere. My recommendation is. To have faith in the plan that the CEO has presented, but to hold her rigorously accountable for for results. And to have her report back to us, the plan of action for increasing salaries and to do the due diligence necessary with that. That's already the relationship that exists. And for that reason, I would encourage us not to pass this measure today. Although its intention is well meaning.
Thank you, trustee Akina. Trustees, any other discussion? Trustee Akaka? I'm sorry, trustee Wahai?
Many, how many votes does it take? Is it five, is a five vote?
For the ad hoc committee to be adopted? Yes. All right, trustee Akaka.
I I think I'm getting a sense where um, there is frustration with the inequity of pay between. Different positions here at the Office of Wine Affairs and there'd be wonderings about how the pay um. That certain amount is reached, how that decision is made. And. Would you say that this would give ability to the trustees to have? More say in this versus. Perhaps another way about it is the administrator consult with the trustees more so. Than what is already being done? I'm really trying to see which is the best way to go forward on this.
Yeah, I think I think having uh, two of our trustees be part of that process in a formal way through the ad hoc committee. Is um, an opportunity to do that and an opportunity to be part of that um, process and to bring to our uh, board. You know, the results of of their findings. And I I would, I would encourage the administration to be open to that process. What we are putting forth before the board to adopt. I think it's um, I think it's a good thing. And I think it's something that we're going to be able to work on together. And I I trust our two trustees to be able to do that. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
No, I I'm, I'm, I've heard all of um, the manao. I I don't understand what the CEO's role is. Then if it's not following what's outlined in policy, which is very clear to me, that this this body has adopted as. My role is CEO. I'm not on this ad hoc group to help steer my staff. I I'm I'm ve- I'm unclear. It's not clear to me. And so therefore, it's going to be very unclear for me to direct staff on how to proceed. Because I I don't understand where I lie in that whole, this whatever's being proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Would it help for her to be added on to this? Or is it?
I don't think so. No, I think it's purposely done and drafted the way it is.
Okay.
That doesn't need to mean that that staff or the CEO or or um, any other individuals that are. Currently part of this effort can't be part of that um, subject matter expertise through an ex officio type of capacity. But at the end of the day, the members of the ad hoc committee are the two trustees and the Director of Human Resources.
Is it, would it be too taxing for our um, Corey, our H R uh, representative to serve in this capacity? Is that part of the, I think that was what we were saying earlier on. Are are is it where there's somebody? Else that could be a part of it to kokua him or just it be somebody else?
I would, I mean, I can't speak for Corey, but I think he would be the one that has the most um, knowledge and experience. Having um, worked with Corey and his team to um, scope out and go through the process of selecting the Chief of Staff. And the Board Secretary. I'm I'm pretty confident in in his efforts.
Okay. Because my understanding is, say, when somebody um, uh, currently comes on to work at the Office of Wine Affairs, it is the administrator. And Corey, um, who's at the, at the human resources, who determines what that um, amount would be.
That's correct. Um, so when a position description is either revised or created new. Um, it is the, it's not the administrator who sets that salary. It's actually H R. They use the current experience ban and they do a comparison to a peer group or a market of that. Particular position. So if there's a concept, uh, misconception that I create that dollar amount, that's not, that's not the fact. It's actually H R who sets those.
And then you decide to go with it or not or make an adjustment to it.
They have to be able to demonstrate how they got to that particular wage um, recommendation. So it's not arbitrary. It's very um, data specific.
Is it simultaneously when somebody is then um, brought on board or an offer is made? That is, it is also looked at where um, other positions are then brought up to speed in terms of pay ine-. Pay equity or inequity, so that's no longer the case. But so it's like. The pay meets the kuliana?
That that's a good question, because and it it's um, it's not vanilla in the response, right? Because you're you're taking a look at um, an individual's experience, the the high need. Um, of that particular position and the timing in which they're bringing somebody in. Um, I mean, there's many factors. So it's not necessarily everybody who with a similar position comes in at the same exact pay. So there's, there's a lot of different um, factors that H R looks at.
But is it where um, other positions that are, have been in place, um, created recently or uh, been uh. In, been in place for ye- many years, let's say, or somebody has been working here many years. Is it ever um, asked of of those involved in the process to make it where it's. Up to par to meet where it's not just new people coming in or paid a certain amount and those that have been here for X amount of time, oh, well.
No, so my.
That's part of the concern.
Well, I this is, that's an interesting question, because this board, for the most part, was here when previous CEO Hussey was here. And she did a whole re-leveling, right, and experience ban. And this board. Is who who approved those bans and that budget. So I'm I'm finding it a little bit ironic. That the the pay scales are being questioned, because this was the body that approved it. Um, two or three years ago when Sylvia, because it had to have been because it went into the budget. Though the salary, the salaries that.
I didn't determine what people were paid. Me, I was not personally asked. This position is getting paid this much. This position is getting this paid this much. That was the administrator. Through time, when it was asked here and there, can an organizational chart be provided? Can the pay be provided? Can, when you are offering a position, it is up saying. This position is available on our website or in some form of matter. Can you put that pay up on how much they would get paid? The answer was, no, we will not do that. So it's not as if the trustees were made a part of that decision making or that process. Through any of it. So I I want you to know that. And I think um. What I'm sensing is there is a consensus or at least somewhat consensus that trustees do want to be a part. Of that conversation and be able to uh, kokua in that process so that there isn't um. Uh, so it mitigates this, this feeling with the. Uh, maybe morale is not so great. Or maybe this pile or this department feels that, hey, this, this. Person, this employee, my fellow colleague is paid this amount of money and this is their kuliana. I've been here recently or I've been here for X amount of years. This is my kuliana. Whether it's that that job or another job that does the same, if not more than they had originally intended to when they came on to this.
I I don't disagree with you, trustee. And again, this has been my number one priority, right? Along with creating a different culture here at Oha from when I came on. Um, I I guess I'm interested in hearing from, you know, trustee Lindsay. And and others who were here when Sylvia was here, that when she did the salary bans, when she did the reorganization. And salaries were set, like, how, how did that not have any board input? Because I find, nothing that I'm proposing is saying that the board shouldn't be involved. I'm saying that there's multiple. Op, you know, opportunities in this process to get board feedback. So I'm confused that the previous CEO was able to get. A whole new salary ban, experience scores, reorg of the whole agency. Without any board approval or re- or review or feedback. That that's mind blowing to me.
Yeah. Well, what we're, what we're experiencing, whether it's um, former administrators or for you, a lot of times administration. Um, they do what they do to um, do their due diligence, um, put certain um. Things into action. And then they come to the board and say, okay, we got a budget realignment request now. And we already hired hired this person or these people and now we're asking for that. So it it's, it's oftentimes after the fact. And I would be interested to hear what our former chair Lindsay. And trustee Wahai.
Uh, let's uh, recognize trustee Wahai then trustee Lindsay. And then I'd like to bring this discussion.
All right.
To a land, to a nice landing.
I'm not um, I'm not against like having another. Uh, committee that's going to make a recommendation and bring information. To inform me on, um, the one, the one thing I'm concerned about that I hadn't thought of until. Uh, just a few minutes ago though, is if Corey's been appointed as a member. I mean, does he, and and he's not a support staff of the ad hoc, does he have the option? To decline the appointment or are we just going to force him onto it? Um, and can we just do that? I don't know. Now I'm I'm getting more concerned about that kind of matter. Um, but.
I in my review of previous ad hoc committees, uh, and there have been many of them, there's trustees, there's staff, there's. Community members that are appointed. And so it's, it's.
But they were, they had all, they had all agreed to to do that. I mean, they had all, all, that that was. Yeah, yeah, but they had all agreed to do that.
Sure. I'm sure Corey would be supportive. Trustee Akaka.
I I think you make a good point. And I think part of the um, push and pull here is that um, you are administrator. And you are also our employee. You, some might say that you are one and only employee besides our trustee aides. Of the Board of Trustees. And then you have administration that falls under you. So. One could say, okay, you're given the task, now you perform it. But let us know if it is not uh, the realistic. It's not realistic, the expectations. So is it where this would be challenging for Corey to do?
To do two processes, yes.
I I wanted to share um, the information that I have historically when Sylvia was here. Sylvia passed the entire restructuring of Oha onto the board for approval. And we had some tugging with her. I mean, believe me, we, we really fought with her and then finally. Um, settled on the structure. However, she never discussed the financials of the, of the. Employees with us. And only when I became chair, did I ask her for the list of salaries. And then I began to see the inequities, because I'm familiar with what people are doing in the agency. So. I mean, from experience, um, many, many years, I can tell that there was some disparity. But you know, I, I kept talking with our CEOs just individually, pinpointing certain. Items of certain people, and not the people, but the positions. How can you pay this person this and pay this person? I mean, that's the kind of uh, conversations I had. Um, but a good example of um, of what has happened. Um, and you know, Stacy, on the other hand, did not pass her restructuring on to the board. And that's what troubled me. Because how could she, and and forgive me, uh, Stacy. How could she create a brand new department with big gunners? And I just love the people that Stacy hired, so that's not the the problem here. But she hired all these wonderful people and she set this, the salary. She set the salary because the H R person works for her. So whether H R did it. Stacy is the person responsible for it. On the other hand, the chair couldn't even hire one um. Deputy Chief of Staff. How does that work? The picture is so off. The chair, the chair of the board sits here. And our um, CEO sits here. So how could she hire almost a million dollars worth of salaries? When um, our chair of the board couldn't hire. Couldn't hire one deputy chief of staff? That doesn't make sense, that tells me that our policies are not are crooked. And maybe that's what we need to look at too, you know, but it's not anybody's fault. Stacy's hired some terrific people that I'm I'm extremely pleased to be part of of the agency. But you know, that's where the unfairness comes in. Um that these old timers maybe, um people that has been here before Stacy. Um they're grumbling because they see the new people coming in and like she said, she's trying to uplift the agency. And that's all good, but what about those that not uplifted? And that's the pro- that's the problem that I think that um trustee Suzie and I are gonna look at.
Well, trustees, and thank you trustee Lindsay um for that. If 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 there's no like further discussion, I would like to have a roll call vote on the formation of the ad hoc committee. Unless. Hearing none? Roll call vote, Lehuah.
Trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka, trustee Akina. Trustee Alapa is excused, trustee Galutaria, trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Suzha, trustee Wahai.
Yes.
And Chair Kahale.
Aye.
We have six yes votes, one ahole, motion passes.
Thank you, thank you, uh CEO. Okay, we're gonna move on to community concerns, which is next on our agenda item. Um the chair is gonna defer executive session to the um following Board of Trustee meeting. I believe that Board of Trustee meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, but is March sixth. Um the chair will now take up community concerns and celebrations. Lehuah, do you have anyone signed up to speak on the community concerns and celebrations?
Yes, we have two people, first speaker is Jermaine Myers, second speaker is Healani Sonora Pale.
How about we, how about we recognize uh Healani since you have been patiently sitting here all day? And we we welcome you to uh Oha Healani and.
Aloha, eh professor.
Aloha. Hi, Lama.
Oh, Nora, it was the most interesting meeting, thank you.
You're welcome.
Talk about the changes, I used to come here years ago and it's, I think it's much better now. That that's my opinion as a public person looking in, much better. Um thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Can I just testify? Um aloha Chair Kahale, Vice Chair Suzan, trustees, um mahalo for your support of the One Piece March this past January. Um yet I'm here to testify on behalf of Pu'u Honoa Oualupe. Um we are the protectors of an ancient Hawaiian burial site located at Waialupe. In the Aho Pua'a of Waikiki on the east end of Oahu. Our organization was established in twenty twenty-two after months of protests of proposed development on Vili Vili Nui Ridge. Which is one large burial ground. In the twenty twenty-two December, we'd come to an agreement with the landowner. Um he promised to stop um attempting to develop and to halt attempts to sell the two point nine acre property. Um which has at least four ancient grave sites that's registered with Shipti. It has been three years since we have turned in our application for the Clean Water and Natural Lands Fund. Um so that this parcel can be purchased. We were initially advised um that the sitting county would be um okay, um we were told verbally. Um with taking the title of this very historic uh burial ground. However, after three years of jumping through hoops, uh including doing and paying for an archaeological inventory survey. That we barely could afford, um we were told recently that we had to find another title holder. Um for the Pu'u Honoa Oualupe in order to move forward uh in the next steps of the review process. Um the city and county suggested Oha. Uh Pu'u Honoa Oualupe is appreciative of a recent meeting that we've had with the City County Land Division. Trustee Suzha, Kapo Hana Ferrera and Oha staff, um these discussions were valuable. And we are hopeful that Oha will support the acquisition of Pu'u Honoa Oualupe going forward. Pu'u Honoa Oualupe is eager to move forward with this application process. Which is vital to protecting Waialupe's environmental and cultural um landscape and ensure long-term stewardship. For the benefit of lineal descendants, Kanakamali community and the public. We are on a short timeline, um because we are on the timeline of the current landowner. Um who is in support of preservation but is anxious to offload the property. Uh we don't know how much longer he will wait before selling elsewhere. Um protecting this area aligns with Oha's strategic plan, the Mana Maoli Ola Strategy four point two, four point three. Um this is a unique opportunity to ensure ancestral remains are safeguarded and the land safeguarded for future generations. Um and mahalo again, mahalo, thank you so much for that meeting, trustee Suzha. And I'm just here to like, hey, we're still here, you know, kind of thing, um I just don't want you to forget about us. Um and it's not that you guys, I, you guys are so busy, you know, I don't wanna put more pressure on you folks. But this is kind of a urgent matter that um we do need Oha's support on. And we are hoping to kind of move forward on the next steps.
Trustees, any questions for Healani regarding this issue?
It's one of mahalo you for your work on this, as with many other things. Um I recall a letter that you had uh sent to me um some years ago regarding the same um um. I don't wanna call it property, but vahi and um I I also wanna share with you that I was um a part of. Working with um part of the team originally, working with the mayor and the sitting county to see how we can best go forward. Uh with this and I always kept in mind, um you're reaching out to me on this and we we were diligently. Looking at how we can best go forward on this, we're we're keeping the community in mind, keeping um those that are resting there in mind. And um also the current landowner and their um mindfulness and wanting to make sure it goes into the right hands. And making sure that um we are the right stewards for this, um shared stewards with the city and county.
Yeah.
And um making sure that they were gonna be alongside us um throughout this process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, yeah, we're not asking for money, we just want you guys to hold the title. And sign on with us, on the application with us, that's pretty much it.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the last meeting that we had, um we we had agreed that the county was going to send over any information to Oha. And I think your nonprofit was also going to be sending information to Kuikke. And um some of the considerations that we were asking the county for, um and I think they were gonna look into was um. Waving or or changing the property designation because right now it's um zone residential. And so property tax is gonna, it's Waialupe, so it's gonna be very expensive and we wanted it to, if there was a potential for a transfer. For them to check with their legal counsel to change the zoning to conservation.
Okay.
Remember, we 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 had talked about that and so we're still waiting for the county, so I I just texted.
Cause they were, they they asked what Oha was doing, so I just was, sorry, okay.
Yeah, no worries, I just texted Kuikke um for him to to ping the county to get an update from them because that's. I don't, do you, was there anything else?
Uh Kapo Hana, that's what we asked for, yeah, and if you guys are familiar with this place, they're they're, the one who was trying to build condos right up there. As part of process Nakia to to stop it and and as soon as they found EV.
Yeah.
And and so um, yeah, I know there's a short window and Kapo Hana, if you can follow up with that, yeah, mahalo.
Mahalo, Healani, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, just um, I'll be back if, you know, I need to, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Appreciate it.
Jermaine.
Me, oh no, I live here, but we have land in a minute.
Aloha, Jermaine. Thank you for being so patient.
Oh, no worries, thank you. Aloha trustees, my name is Jermaine Myers. I do disagree with trustee Akina. Governing and management is is not two separate stuff. Um and I heard the discussion, so I include including it in uh the executive session, my testimony. I'm gonna include it with my community concerns regarding David Laeha. It's kind of interesting that you guys were having a a discussion about money and about staff. And on the agenda is regarding a previous CEO that in created a seven hundred and five thousand dollar settlement. And the reason I I've I've been tracking that that settlement for the longest time or that lawsuit from the time it started. Of course, I would, I used to come to Oha from the time David Laeha was, David Laeha was here. Um he is a neighborhood board member for Kailua and so I've seen him at the installation, et cetera. And so my concern is that there needs to be check and balances, always, there always needs to be check and balances. At the Hawaiian Homes Commission, um when I attend those meetings, the chairman and the the director of the. Of the um department is the same person, right? So Kali is the administrator over the department as well as the chairman of the commission. There needs to be check and balances, the administrator cannot run the depart, I mean, they cannot run this agency. In the respect of having autonomy, there always needs to be check and balances. I mean, that seven hundred five thousand dollars has to do with whistleblower uh retaliation. So the board is responsible for the decisions being made by the administrator. And so I I was also surprised when I saw it on the track register, cause I check the track registers when it's published by Hawaii Free Press. And I saw that and I was like, wow, what's this going on, seven hundred five thousand to David Laeha? And I never saw it come before this board. And so I wanna read for you um ten dash twelve assistant staff. The administrator may employ and retain such officers and employees as may be necessary to carry out the functions of the office. Such officers and employees may be hired without regard to chapter seventy-six and shall serve at the pleasure of the administrator. Officers and employees of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs shall be included in any benefits program generally applicable to officers and employees. But it also says, ten dash six, general duties of the board. A, the general duties of the board shall be, and it lists nine different um duties. But it also says, B, the board shall have any powers which may be necessary. For the full and effective performance and discharge of the duties imposed by this chapter. And which may be necessary to fully and completely effectuate the purposes of this chapter. So that's the check and balance. So for me, either the board can say, okay, you only got twenty million dollars for two years, you know, ten million a year. And have your pleasure about how much people you're gonna hire, you're gonna hire two uh secretaries. Or you're gonna hire one director for the same salary, that's the pleasure part. You get to determine what amount of pe- where people are, but the budget. Every year, you, every two years you come to my board and I look at the budget and I look at the salary. I don't want an administrator that has the freedom to just run willy-nilly on the budget. And just, okay, I'm gonna, since it says the pleasure, I'm gonna take the pleasure of hiring two hundred people. Let me be transparent, DHHL serves more people than Oha. As far as on a daily basis, there are ten thousand lesses that they gotta hear calling up, what happened with my successor, da 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 da. Oha has, doesn't have to deal with that, but go look at how much employees Oha have compared to DHHL. So for me, you're still a state agency and yes, you are hybrid, you are a trust. And that's why we have a board of trustees, but there's gotta be check and balances and it bothers me when I see an administrator. Asked, you know, demanding, why is it that you wanna do an ad hoc to check and balance the system? It bothers me because I was here when the administrator suggested the reorganization and then didn't execute it. I'm here when David Laeha just having seven hundred five thousand dollars. So.
Thank you so much, mahalo.
Thank you.
Do you have anyone else here for community concerns? Celebrations?
No one else has signed up.
None?
No one else has signed.
Okay, moving on to announcements, do we have any announcements by any trustees? None or we're not, we're gonna defer that to the uh March sixth, sixth agenda. I have one announcement to make, uh the chair will be leaving Hawaii at the end of the month to go to Washington DC. Um we talked about informing everyone of travel, both on the admin side and the trustee side, so I'm just letting everyone know that. I'm gonna be going to Washington DC at the end of the month to meet with all four members of Hawaii's delegation. In addition to that, I'll be attending the Presidential State of the Union address in the uh US House of Representatives. On behalf, uh well, in my capacity to represent Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Uh in the event that um you know, this board needs to convene while I'm away, uh vice chair Suzha. Will uh. Uh take on the role of the uh acting chair, does any trustees have any other announcements besides that?
When will you be back?
I will be back on May, March, May, March sixth for our Board of Trustee meeting. I will be um remote traveling on our standing committee day and hopefully with the wifi on Delta, I will be able to log in. Okay, hearing none, this is a good meeting, look forward to working with you. And if, hearing none?
Yeah.
This Board of Trustee meeting is.
Oh, I moved it, we entered.
Seconded by trustee Wahai, and we get a roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa is excused, trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Suzha.
Aye.
Trustee Wahai and Chair Kahale.
Aye.
We have seven yes, we are adjourned.
Mahalo, everyone, we're adjourned.